Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. You go from one extreme to another. Yeah. Yesterday, yesterday when I came by to get my book, my puppy was with me. So you weren't here. It was your at lunch. He's looking at me for it, puppy.
Hundred pound or eighty pound?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five pounds.
Yeah, the baby. This is the newest, latest and greatest. So let's, which one? You're looking at the thick one? You want to look at the pack, the tax hearing? I got a question for you. Oh, no, not that. No, 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 no. How do you feel the temporary speed bumps wanted to to the road? To help encourage people to slow down at stop signs and stop? I know, I know, I know. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And 'cause, well, how they just move through. Yeah. Oh, no, wait. They're just blowing through them. They're, they're not. And they're blowing through. Coming out of my neighborhood, when you cross a little bridge and it's a four-way stop sign right there, heading towards Nineteenth. And it's, it's that, that stop sign there, they're blowing through it. And then at the Houston, the Geneva and Houston Street, they're blowing through it. So it's, it's, you know, they, they see the speed thing when it's set up, yeah, they slow down for a hot minute, but then go, go through it, you know, so.
Those are the changes?
This is the separation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
The tax contract, can you handle the highlights on that? That was on the marriage report.
Yeah, well, but, I mean, with all the kids that we've got coming from the elementary school there, it's.
That is good. Just stand up if you can, that's cool.
Which way?
Have you been downstairs?
I have heard some feedback about us stopping on camera.
Okay, I got a question on this one.
Can we move it further back and get a little clearer? Or is that too far?
I can try. 'Cause I only get half of these questions. Is this the every-two-year poll?
I don't know. I'll find it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be every two years.
Right.
'Cause I brought that up.
I'll find it.
Yeah, is this supposed to be every two years?
What is that?
The backflow testing?
Oh, yeah.
It's supposed to be every two years.
Yeah, they've been sending out notices. I just got a notice.
Yeah, but I mean, for these individuals, they're saying two consecutive years, when it's supposed to be every two years. That's the email thingy that they just handed out.
Only gave it to the people that were impacted.
Oh. Yeah. I see that.
We're going to start in just a second. I heard from Harold, but I didn't hear from Phil.
The sprinkler system, something? And 'cause I, when I found out that our ordinance goes by state and the state is every two years. Especially when it says here, two tests, as another test would have been required.
Sheena, the answer is yes.
That's every two years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Well, Harold's not here. Got stuck.
All right, we're going to give this just two more minutes. See, I'm nice, unlike Phil who starts the meetings without me if I don't show up like right on time.
Oh, my gosh.
Did we get that on recording?
I may, I may have been the one that encouraged him to do that. Throw someone under the bus.
Why am I not surprised? Well, while we're waiting on Phil and until we actually begin the meeting, just like to extend a special happy birthday to Scott Dixon.
Thank you.
Embarrass him publicly and.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You made it another year.
I know.
And happy birthday to my twin sister.
Yes.
She's eight minutes older than me. I won't say how old she is. I'm forty-seven. She's, she's. That's right. She is a librarian for the city of Saxon and the city of Wiley, I believe. I think I've got that. I know she lives in Wiley. I'm most probably, she's a librarian for both of those cities.
Well, that's cool. Just a family of overachievers.
Yeah. She's also an Aggie. I'm glad Phil's not here to salute for all of us. She married an Aggie, which I think is appropriate.
Who was I talking to just recently? There was an Aggie that married a Longhorn?
Oh, it happens.
Oh, that was, that's kind of scary.
From what I understand, it's almost like when a Florida Gator marries a Georgia Bulldog, it's the same thing. It's fiery.
Oh, no.
It's ugly. It's an ugly rivalry. When the troopers are at the county line, at the state line on both sides, just looking for those state license plates, one mile over.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Oh, I didn't get my actual.
Your packet? Did we got your packet for you or are you?
No, I'll go get my package. I had it sitting right on the computer, so I can pick them both up.
You know, the best birthday present is a short meeting.
They, well.
Just saying. Yeah, I will, and I realize, so I have a tax public hearing and a budget public hearing to go through, and I will get through those slides.
And then keep him.
No, there's no changes, but.
And then just have him just hit the points, you know, that was already asked over, so.
All right, well.
Aren't you the facilitator?
Yeah.
The former mayor said I was. It's like, oh.
I'm not going to claim.
One of y'all are, or can be.
Darren, here's the good thing. Darren's parents actually live here.
Yeah, I know. His dad's a member of the Legion.
They can claim him. I mean.
His dad's a member of the Legion.
If my mom was here, she could, I could, you could say, can't you control this boy? And, you know, I'm not controlling Darren, but his parents do live here, so if we have an issue.
Oh, yeah.
We can look him up.
I, I, oh, no, I have all of his dad's contact information. I know his mom and dad well, they come to the Legion.
He can slip it to you.
Oh, yeah. I can say things.
Did you ever get grabbed by the ear and hauled into a room by your mom? Did that ever happen?
What's that?
Do you ever get grabbed by the ear and hauled into a room?
Grabbed by the ear. No, we got thumped, though.
Yeah?
In the car. All right, so it looks like Councilman King is on a plane to Alaska, so he's not going to be on time.
Oh.
Thank you for letting us know.
He may have told us, I just.
I remember he was going to be out, but I thought it was for your meeting, or the upcoming meeting, safety council.
That's all right.
Slipped his mind.
No, I think he probably did tell us and we just didn't remember. He told us the date range and we didn't remember where it was. All right, so we're going to call the meeting to order then at 5:36. We'll start with roll call.
All right. Mayor Darren Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Sheena Martinez.
Here.
Which is District One, excuse me. District Two, Councilmember Paul Carey.
Here.
Councilmember, District Three, Councilmember Phil King is absent. District Four, Councilmember Harold Stein is absent. District Five, Councilmember Herb Dyer.
Present.
Which makes up a quorum, under the council.
Great, thank you. All right, will everybody stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, to Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Please remain standing for the invocation. We have Pastor Mitch Kopp.
All right, I'd like to read Matthew seven, verse seven, and it reads, "Ask, and it will be given to you; seek, and you will find; knock, and the door will be open to you." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight, and we thank you for this opportunity to come together at this city hall, at this city council meeting, to ask and to seek and to find. Father, bless all that's here tonight, and bless those that could not be here. May there be unity and oneness in their decisions. And Father, provide wisdom, blessings, and favor to this council and to the city of Casterville. Father, we thank you so much for the recent rains, and we pray you will continue to bless us with rains and relieve us of this drought. Father, we give honor, praise, and glory to your holy name, and we ask and pray these things, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, next item, citizens' comments. If anybody would like to speak for citizens' comments, please stand up, state your name and your address.
Gary Martin, twelve eleven Washington Street.
Oh, can you stand up to the microphone so people can hear?
I've never done this before.
That's all right.
I know we've got three minutes, right?
Yes. You want the timer here? I'll put it.
Okay. There's three items, two of them are safety. I think we need a traffic light right there at nine in Geneva by the post office, because the traffic's got real bad there now, and it's hard to get out. And it would also slow down the traffic coming off the hill coming from Hondo. And the other one is from the post office down to my house, right there across, before you cross the bridge to go to the neighborhood in the back, cars are speeding pretty good. They don't even stop at the stop sign, especially from dusk to dawn. They'll, they'll go through that stop sign forty mile an hour. And if we could just get some of them rolling-type speed bumps, not the big ones, but the kind of roll type. Plus, I live on Washington Street, it's on a corner, but my driveway is on Geneva, and I talked to the community development director, Brianna Sotos, and she didn't understand why, but then she said that I'd have to be fifteen feet off the property line, being on an adjacent street. That only gives me nine foot from my house. And I just wonder if somehow that could change so I could put me a carport to protect my vehicles, because nine feet's not going to protect them from hailstorms and stuff. And... That's pretty much it, you know, but those three items, the traffic light, because it's hard getting out, it's dangerous, speed bumps, and the adjacent street where I could put me a carport to cover my vehicle up. And I thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, tell me your name and address one more time.
Gary Martin, twelve eleven Washington Street.
I, I pass you every morning and every evening, just about. You've got two German Shepherds.
I think I remember your face. I seen it on the season.
No, no, I was going to say, thanks, Paul, because I was going to clarify that I stop on that stop sign mostly.
But Sheena lives in that neighborhood in the backs, because she knows that street. It's a bad street.
I'm a, I'm a neighbor, across the street neighbor to Sheena.
Yeah. But, yeah, bred one of my dogs with her, didn't take, though. But I got them barking dogs on that corner. Two Shepherds.
Great, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, sir.
All right, anybody else?
David Mertz, one forty-eight Village Path. I haven't even said anything yet. Stop laughing.
I was just thinking. No, I was, I was putting up the timer for you.
So at the last city council meeting, the council was trying to think of ways to, you know, help lead the charge and encourage people to be aware of the water that they're using. In your packets tonight, there's a, I don't know if it's a budget or a potential budget for the Parks Department, and in there there's $240,000 to install splash pads, which, if my understanding is correct, are sprinklers for kids to play in, and another $112,000 on the design, installation, or maintenance of irrigation systems for the parks, throwing water all over the place, a lot of it on landscaping, not all, some of it's on fields and stuff. There are native plants that need less water than more common landscaping choices, live oaks, prickly pears. City might think about trying to redirect some of that water toward, or some of that money away from dumping water on the ground and towards using some of the beautiful native plants that don't need that water in the first place. And in response to Mr. Martin's statements, speed bumps can work wonders if you don't think they do. There's a neighborhood in San Antonio that is absolutely painful to shortcut through, and I'd love to show it to you sometime.
I've driven through it.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Kyle McVay, three oh seven Madrid, Casterville. Several weeks ago, I had a meeting with the mayor, Mr. King, and the city manager concerning an animal shelter. You have extra, no, you don't have extra funds, but funds might be available in now or in the near future, and I'm imploring you, please, please, don't put this off. It's desperately needed. We can work together. I, I'm speaking on behalf of Nip and Tuck, Casterville Nip and Tuck, the spay and neuter program, as well as CAPS, who would be working with it, and we can do this, and we can do it as a joint effort with the city. So please, consider us in your capital improvements or whatever you have monies available to do so. That's at one. In response to the gentleman's bit about the park and the money going towards water, a lot of thought has been put into that, and a lot of plants have been put over at Lime's Park, but because of no water, they all died. You have to have some form of irrigation or some form of water, and you can put in all the native plants you want, but they'll die if you don't have the water. So I don't want to see any, that's part of the Parks Board. So, thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Kyle. Anybody else? All right, great, thank you. All right, next item is consent agenda. On the consent agenda, minutes for August ninth, twenty twenty two, city council meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
I approve that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is mayor's report. Can I use your? Okay, this shouldn't be terribly long. We're going to talk about the, the journey series that we're embarking on starting this week, some updates on the Northern Route. We'll talk a little bit about some of the business supports that we've been doing, some information on the airport zoning board, and then Scott is actually going to help out with the natural gas contract that, that we're going into on, on the cusp of. So I just wanted to remind everybody, it starts this Thursday, is the first of a four-week series. It will be directly next door at Elsas Hall at twelve oh one Fiorella at seven PM. This week, we have Stephen Oubre. I can never pronounce his, his name correctly, but it's, it's Oubre, just like it's spelled. So he's actually a city planner, architect, and he's going to be talking to us about a few different things. One, who, who are the developers that are coming here to, to cover up the farmland? Who are the people that are coming in to create these developments? What are, why is this appealing to them? What will they create if we have, if we just leave it alone? What can we do to encourage other, other things that are more conducive? Basically, the whole idea behind this entire series is, how do we grow as Casterville? The growth is inevitable. It is, it's not something that we can or should stop because people have land rights, but we want to grow as Casterville. And so each one of these portions of the series is going to talk to us about what is unique about Casterville, what can we do in our codes and ordinances, what are some of the planning strategies that we can use to maintain the small community feel even as we grow larger? So I encourage everybody to join us for the series. They will be recorded so that you can go back and refer to them, but I would encourage you to be there as a part of it. The accumulation of this, here, actually, let me move to the next slide. So this is a part of a bigger plan. The accumulation of this is going to be that we are going to write codes and ordinances, and we're going to make some decisions on what are the requirements, whether it's dark skies lighting, or whether it's street signs, or whether it's size of roads, types of roads, allotment for schools, allotment for more localized businesses. So it's, it's going to be a part of our planning process. We'll use this in the short term through development agreements. We've had, the developers that have come in have been very good partners, and they've asked us, what do you want? Within reason, within our ability to be profitable, what do you want? And we just, we don't know. We're not city planners, we're not experts in this. So originally, I've gone through to, to find some people that could guide myself and city council and realized that, I, I think that we all realize that this cannot be just a council-driven initiative, it has to be a community-driven initiative. So that's why we encourage everybody to go through that process with us. Let's learn as a community, let's see what the options are as a community, and let's make some decisions together as a community based on the information that we learned through this. So please be a part of that. This is, if you have not gotten the multitude of, of information that we sent out, it's in your utility bill, it's on Facebook, on the website. We put it out through the chamber. If, for anybody that's here, there are brochures back on the back. We're trying to make sure that everybody in the community knows about it. So if you haven't heard about it, please reach out to us. If you know of somebody that you think would be concerned with the growth of Casterville and where do we go from here, please encourage them to attend. Okay, thoroughfare process. So we've been talking about this for a long time now. This is something that, this is one of the things that, that was already in pro, in progress when, when I came into office. I just kind of lit a fire under it and have been working with, we all have been working with partners in the city and the county, with Tech dot, really working on this, and it has come to fruition. It was approved by the engineering. The city council approved the interlocal agreement with the county. The county approved the, the expenditure of the engineering. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding in the paper a few weeks ago that the, that the Anvil then, then did correct, and that was that it's not a study, it is actually the engineering that will, that will describe exactly how to, how to construct this road. This will be a constructible engineering drawing. So that is $850,000. It's going to be split between the city and the county to engineer the initial route, and that is Highway Ninetieth Victory Lane to four seventy-one, just north of Fitwell.
And as far as deliverable, that, that deliverable is supposed to be due to the county in six to eight months. A shovel-ready design set to build the road.
So that's what we're concentrating on now, future discussions on the other, but we know that this is accomplishable, and one of the things that, I, I've supported Alsatian Oaks, the development agreement with that, I think that it's going to do good things for the city, but I was kind of freaked out that all of that traffic was going to dump out into, basically into the core of Casterville. And so this provides some relief routes as that gets built, getting alternate ways for those people to go around. For the people in Country Village, there was also another mistake that, that the paper then corrected. The, the reason for this is not to get people through Country Village, it's to keep them from going through Country Village. So it gives them a faster way to go around when they need to go around. We should never have the, the small residential roads as our main thoroughfares for people that are coming through our city just kind of barreling on. So making really, really good progress with that. Next, talking about business support efforts. So as, as many of you remember, we brought on Darren Hand, we went through a selection process, we had a group of community members that leaned into this and, and selected Darren. Darren has done some really good things in terms of setting our, setting kind of our baseline, our foundational with our literature. If anybody is curious, there was another little bit of misunderstanding that we've since corrected. The logo that was determined is this one up at the top. I hear that, if you can see, I don't know if I can get my cursor on it. It's the logo very top center there, so that is, as far as we can tell, the original logo. We are still looking into it. I hear that we might actually have the original artwork with the original artist, and so he's just been going through to make sure that what we're putting out is consistent, that people recognize it, and that it is, I, I think that he found that there were six different logos in just the airport alone, and I looked at all of the different cars. I think I saw one of the public works actually has this one, and everything else has something different. So we're just trying to, to make things a little bit more standard. So why are we doing? So why are we doing business support efforts? It's to help our business, which also helps our residents. Um, so this is a breakdown of our general fund revenue, and that is what pays for streets and parks and library and our police department, uh, city staff. Uh, so this is basically everything non-airport, non, uh, non-utility. Out of this, as residences, we pay only 13%. Of all of that comes out of our property taxes. Um, so it's actually very small percentages coming from our property taxes. The majority of it comes from businesses. So 23%, and this is of the entire general fund, 23% of that is the business property tax. Um, uh, 11% of it is sales tax, and that's, I call that no tourism impact. Those are things like, uh, online orders and things that are just shipping in here. Um, it's not like a retail or a, a brick and mortar kind of, uh, uh, business. It's just, uh, goods that are being consumed in Castleville. The rest of them, 33%, that's a third of our entire general fund budget, comes from our local shops and restaurants. It comes from our local stores, brick and mortar in Castleville. So the more, if we can make a small impact on a third of our overall budget, it makes a huge difference to our overall. It reduces the tax burden on the people. It reduces, um, or it increases the amount of services that we can provide, uh, for traffic control, for police officers, uh, for better streets. So this is really why we're doing this. Um, what to expect upcoming? Um, so Darren Ham has already put together some really great marketing material. Uh, he is working in coordination with, uh, as many entities as possible. We're not trying to recreate anything. We're trying to partner with the people that are already doing things. So some of this stuff, you'll see that there are other organizations. Uh, Castleville Conservation Society has put together some of these. So he'll be working with these different groups, with the Chamber, with, um, the local shops, to make sure that we are doing something of value to them. So, uh, he has been engaged with local businesses. You'll see some, um, some personal interest stories from our local businesses, more and more coming up. Uh, he's developing some shirts, hats, stickers, postcards. Uh, people really love to come in and buy things that actually say Castleville. And so he's working with some of the local businesses to be able to provide them, uh, official city materials so that they can actually sell that to people. Uh, create awareness, uh, create, uh, a great representation of Castleville. Uh, and then he's working on business, uh, video productions to help promote on electronic and social media. So he's, he's been a busy guy, done a great job of asking. Uh, and that's, that's one piece of kudos that I've got to give him. He didn't come in and tell us, uh, you guys are just a bunch of small-town people that don't know what you're doing. He approached it as, I have expertise that can help you out, but I need to know what you want. And he's done a really good job of asking, what is it that you want? How can we represent? The logo was a great example of this. He didn't come in and try and create a new logo. He said, what is your logo? I want to honor your logo. So, great job on that. Um, so I don't have supporting details on this, but I do want to mention, for the Joint City-County Airport Zoning Board, uh, we have a group, for those of you who don't know, um, the Airport Zoning Board, it's mandated by the FAA. It is a, a legal requirement that we as a city have to, uh, have to support, so does the county, uh, to continue airport operations. There are two appointed from the city members, two appointed from the county, and between those four, they elect a, a chairman. So these people are volunteers that are putting in their own time and effort to figure out, how do we make sure that we're honoring the airport, allowing continued operation of the airport, and making sure that what's built around it doesn't encroach on that? Uh, that where it might put us at legal obligation. Um, San Antonio, I think, went through this. It cost them over a billion dollars to do some, some, uh, fixes to what they hadn't put in that ordinance. And so we're just trying to make sure that we get in front of our legal obligations with that. That said, I would encourage you, uh, if you have, if you're impacted, if you're in Castleville, if you're within five-mile radius of the, uh, airport, I would say go to their meetings. Their next meeting, it's especially called at 6 o'clock. Um, I would encourage you, I-
It's actually called on Monday.
Monday.
The 29th at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Monday, 29th at 6 o'clock. Um, so I would encourage you to, to go and be a part of it. If you're impacted by this, if you live around, own property around, um, if you have any kind of vested interest, I would encourage you to be there as, but I would also encourage you to be an active participant. Um, I've seen it go both ways. I've seen some people that have leaned in and done some really good things, who've made some really good, uh, recommendations. And I've seen, seen some people that just came in and yelled and blustered. And the first one will help us get further. The second one will not. So, uh, I would encourage you to be a part of that, an ongoing part of that. Uh, next item is gas operations contract. And I'm going to let Scott go into a little bit more detail. He's gone a little bit deeper into this.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and really, I think this is more of an opportunity. He's being very nice, because I, I kind of threw this on his list and then didn't tell him why I put it on there. But it's really just to create an opportunity for the public to be aware that the gas contract that we've had, the operations and maintenance contract with CPS, uh, that, uh, that we've had for a number of years, over a dozen years at least, um, they, uh, that's up for renewal. It's, it's, uh, terminates in September. So council took action to, oh, I'm sorry. It didn't have to come to council action, but we, we ended up extending it for one month, getting a one-month extension, more or less, uh, on the operation contract while we figure things out. But, um, it's going to be a, there are a couple of challenges. Number one, uh, their fee for their operations and maintenance has gone up. They had not looked at it. They hadn't really done their due diligence in a number of years. And I think, truthfully, they probably weren't charging us as much as they should have. So we've been a beneficiary of that. Uh, but I also think that their, you know, their, their proposed rate seems a little high. It's pretty stiff. It's almost double what we're currently, uh, being charged. So we're, uh, as staff, uh, we're working with Schneider Engineering to look at several options. This isn't necessarily their forte. They, they've helped us with our electrical contract, but, uh, they are also helping us kind of look at, what would it look like to do gas operations internally? What would that cost us? Uh, are there any other, um, operations groups that we can go to and get pricing from? Uh, and then what is the CPS? How does their operations, their cost operations compare to what they're charging us? Uh, so we're going to try to get some of that data to share with council. But we really wanted to give the public, and, uh, just a heads up, basically, that there's something going on with gas, and more than likely, it's going to lead to some kind of increase. We're going to do our best to, to minimize that, because no one likes paying more, especially when you're not getting more necessarily. But, um, we're in the, that's in process, and there'll be more at subsequent meetings of the City Council. And I would expect probably the next meeting may, hopefully in the first meeting in September, we'll have some information, but certainly, uh, by the second meeting at the very latest.
It's unfortunate, but this is no surprise. Uh, our cost of, everything is going up. Um, while we're not increasing rates for additional revenues, we are, uh, we're burdened with extra costs. Okay, so, um, next item. Okay, so the next item is public hearing. This is number two, on the proposed FY23 property tax rate.
For that, I'll take the dongle back if you want me to do a short presentation.
And you want to open the public hearing, please?
We're going to open the public hearing at 6:01.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
I will, I, I've got a brief presentation. Anyone wishing to speak, they, uh, you can either speak now or you can wait until after I'm done, uh, but I'll give an update.
And you should have a hard copy in front of you, the presentations for both of you.
I did update it while we're sitting here to, to make sure we capture the new logo.
I think you, you missed capturing the new logo.
What's that?
Oh, here.
No, I did it live, like, while y'all were, while you were talking, I was doing this.
No, I didn't do that.
The new old logo.
What's that?
The new old logo.
Yeah, the new old logo. That's exactly right. And I think that's, just to be clear, the issue is that we were being accused of adopting a new logo, and we are not. We're, I think Darren Ham is just trying to find, well, what was the original logo? And how can be, how can we be as true to that as possible? And so that's what this does. We believe that this is the truest representation of the original logo. Um, and, and, yeah, anyway. Okay, it's beautiful. Um, so a couple of things to just go through. None of this is new. This is the same information that was shared at the last meeting. Um, just to look at our homestead exemptions. These are exemptions that are available, uh, to homeowners in Medina County. And I'll just kind of give you a brief moment to look at some of those. Uh, you'll note that that top, uh, line, the top, um, row, the number on the far right, this, uh, 40,000. Uh, you can't see mine. I'm going to do this. There we go. Uh, this 40,000, um, is new. That's, that's the constitutional amendment that, that we as Texas voters voted on not too long ago, and it's being implemented. And so that's a, a new exemption that's available to all homeowners, uh, in Texas. I believe, is that, yeah. All homeowners, not over 65. Okay. Uh, here's your partial exemptions. Um, the city of Castleville is the only city to have a freeze in place that's in Medina County. Something to note. These are your disabled veteran exemptions and amounts that are available. And the DV1 and DV4 and DVHS, those are all different, um, standards for disabled veterans. And it has to do with the level of disability or, or, yeah, of disability. This is the average home value. Um, and again, I think we talked about this last meeting. It shows 2021, uh, because really, our home values are always at least a year behind from the year that we actually collect on them. So they did a review of your value in the last year. Uh, we get that final assessment in July. That's when we get the actual final values. And then that's what the taxes are assessed on that we don't pay until basically January of 2023. So it's a little, it, when you start to look at the, the years, it gets a little convoluted. But, uh, these are the average home values. Once again, the city of Castleville has the average, uh, the highest average median home value, uh, in the county, in Medina County. Uh, these are the 2021 tax rates. And you'll note, um, .5233 is the proposed, uh, tax rate, or was the tax rate for last year, and the proposed tax rate is the same. Uh, this is not a coincidence. Um, we issued some debt in January. The council made the decision to pay for a portion of that debt using cash, but to try and maintain the rate the same. If we were not to maintain the rate the same, if we, if we were not to spend any of the cash that was on hand on our debt service, our legally, uh, available and adoptable, uh, tax rate would be like .58, somewhere in that range. Um, but because we are using a portion of our tax dollars, and I'll show that on the next slide, um, we, we put in the, the right amount to keep that, that rate flat. And that's in keeping with kind of the plan that the financial advisor and staff presented to council and was approved by council back in January of this year. Uh, so this is, and I realize this is difficult to read, and I will see if I can highlight it a little bit. And we'll go back to our laser pointer. Oh, okay, so I can only do one or the other. Um, so I'm going to, I'm going to circle this area, and then we'll highlight it. But, uh, this is your, uh, cash injection that we just talked about and your, uh, debt service rate. And this is the, uh, model that the financial advisor kind of drafted for us, once we issued this debt, that shows the impact of the values. The values are over on the left side of the screen, and then on the right side, what your INS rate would be. And you can see the INS rate, uh, should fall in future years. And this isn't simply because we're going to, you know, we as taxpayers are going to have our home values increased. That does help some. That, that will, that will impact the rate. But it's, uh, also in recognition of all the new value that's coming on from these various developments that the city is currently negotiating. And, uh, this just shows you again, uh, some of that same information and a little bit of a forecast. Uh, and you can see in 2023, um, the 2022, our proposed, our rate was .5233. 2023, we're going to be at the same rate. More than likely, we'll have the same rate in 2024. At some point, there will be, uh, the, an opportunity, um, especially as we have needs to grow the police department, to look at back, to actually ending up with a lower rate, lower total rate, um, and, uh, potentially backfilling, uh, some of the O&amp;M portion, the operation and maintenance portion. It may require, we'll just see. It's all kind of a, it's a, it's a, uh, exercise in mathematics and calculus and a lot of guesswork. But what I, what I, my most likely estimate is that, uh, in the next two to five years, we will be in a position, and more likely in the next two to three, we will be in a position where we can lower our total rate by a, a significant amount, sort of like from .5233 to .42 or something like that. And at that time, we will have, uh, the opportunity to look at increasing the O&amp;M portion of that rate, the operations and maintenance, to, uh, provide for police funding. And I think that's something we talked about, kind of, uh, as a strategy going forward. And as we go through this process, and as we see the values come on, et cetera, it's something that I'm looking at very closely, that our finance director is looking at very closely, and we're working with the financial advisor to, to look into, to be able to advise you, well, when, when is the appropriate time to do that? Uh, because we know that we have a need to, to add police officers now. And that's one reason why we're looking at grants for that purpose that would pay for the first two years, um, of, uh, police officer salary so that, and then we pick up the third year. And the idea is to time that so that we can time it with, uh, a time when, when we're actually able to lower rates for our taxpayers and still afford to, to add services. So I'm, that's just a, that's just commentary. It's not for discussion, because it's not on agenda. Um, general fund expenditures, I'm not going to go into this, uh, because we have a separate public, uh, budget hearing. But these are some slides that we shared at the last meeting. And like I said, they'll be repeated for the, uh, the tax, or, I'm sorry, for the budget hearing in just a minute. So at this, at this time, if anybody has any, uh, public comments they'd like to make, uh, the public hearing is still open.
Disabled veteran, or you had it up there. I'm trying to understand. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm working. I'm actually, uh, uh, VA, disabled, Social Security. And I was trying to understand. You went through it pretty quick there. I just was trying to understand what that was about.
Yeah, so, uh, this is something I encourage you to co, contact the, uh, tax appraisal office and make sure that you're getting all the exemptions that you are, uh, do as a disabled veteran. Depending on the level of your declared disability, um-
On the ninth, so I'll be in that, like, DV4.
Yeah, you'll probably be DV4, so that'd be a $12,000 off the value. Yes, ma'am, Sheena.
I can answer the question. So take your, uh, letter you get from the VA every year and take it to the tax office, and they'll take that percentage of your disability rating off your taxes you pay every year.
Yeah, I got to find that, because right now, I'm, I think I'm at 50% with the tax office now.
Yeah, so just bring them the updated letter, and then they'll up it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm glad you're here.
Once you put it in, you don't have to take it every year.
Right.
They'll, they'll, they'll leave it, once you give them the letter.
Yeah, they'll lock it in.
If your disability number goes up, and you get a new letter, take it over there. You're already at the highest level, unless you get 100%.
I think I'm at DV4, but I'm not with them.
Yeah.
Because I think I was 50% last time I went over there.
Yep.
Yeah.
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 Thank you very much.
This was a profitable meeting for you. I don't work on commission, though. It's all good. Anybody else wishing to speak during public comment?
Just wanted to thank Mr. Martin for his service.
Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public meeting then at 6:12. Next item is public hearing number one on proposed FY '23 annual operating budget.
Once again, Mayor and Council, I have, oh, did you open it? You have to open it.
I can never remember that. Six, and we're going to open the public meeting at 6:13.
All right, so budget, this is for the public hearing for the proposed budget for the city of Castroville. So one of the things that we kind of locked arms and agreed to when we adopted the strategy was that the city was going to, the city, the operation and maintenance portion of the budget would live on whatever the, whatever the state allowed. And what the state allows is a 3% per year increase to the O and M rate. So we are not, you know, bringing a rate that, that needs to be elected or adopted. We're taking what is allowable under the state without having to go to an election and putting that in O and M and the rest in INS, and then figuring out what rate does that get to, to point 5233, as I mentioned before. So just a few things to go over with this budget. So we'll review the general fund expenditure, the revenues and expenditures, the utility fund revenues, expenditures, airport, tourism and business development, and then we'll talk about the bond series projects just very briefly. This is, I think I may have to step away from that. So a couple of things to just remind you all of, and for the public, some of the public may be seeing this for the first time, but this is the fourth or fifth time that council has seen it, and very little has changed from the original proposed budget. So a couple of things to note, there's been a cost of living increase included in the budget for all employees. It's 3% for all full-time employees making over $65,000, and 6% for all employees, part-time and full-time, they're making less than $65,000. And the total cost of the general fund to do that is approximately $129,000. And then there were a couple of minor increases. These are actually relatively minor. It's, you know, between a 4 and 5% increase on our health and dental insurance, which actually is not bad at all. Our health and dental is very, our, our health insurance for, for everybody, is very expensive. So the city currently plays, pays the employees' portion. So employees do not pay for their healthcare. The city pays for that as one of the benefits. That's a pretty common or typical benefit for city employees to receive for cities in Texas. But we do not pay for the beneficiary care or the dependent care. Independent care at the city currently, like if you, if you're married with a family and you want to put them on city coverage, it's, it's about $1,000 a month. And that's quite expensive for a lot of folks. So that's actually been an issue for recruitment. We've had the, most recently, the, the folks that we're trying to recruit have been police officers, and we've had some really good candidates that have turned down, worked with us based on that and solely that. You know, the pay was right, everything was right, except that our benefit, our benefits were not good enough. And it's a real challenge for us because as a, as an organization, we're just too small to compete. We're in TML, we're in that larger pool, but if we were to go out and try to self-insure, we're too small to do that. I've done that before. So it's something, it's a challenge that staff is working on, but it's one that is going to be very difficult to get over until we get larger as an organization, unfortunately. And then there's a couple of other things. We reclassified a Parks and Rec Streets position for the admin to go full-time. And then we also created some additional salary in the, I need to not touch that. For the library to be able to flex up as needed throughout the year. This will be kind of a test year to see how that goes and see how they manage that. And then we have a few other things. We have 457 contribution. We're increasing the city's contribution to a retirement plan from one to one to two to one, up to 2%. And the cost of that is noted there. And then, of course, we created the tourism business development director position that the mayor alluded to earlier. And that's not the salary, that's the total cost of the general fund to add that position. There's, in addition to salary, that we created some budgetary line items to allow for outside contracting, for marketing, for printing, for other things that Darren, or Mr. Ham's already been pretty involved in, even though he's only been here for a short period of time. So this is a chart that shows you the general fund balance, number of days on hand and fund balance. And that blue line, I was trying to remember, I made these numbers bigger, but I think I did it on a different version. So you can see that as our expenditures go up, all things being equal, the number of days on hand go down. But as a city, we are very, very, very healthy in our fund balance. That, that area in orange, we have approximately 390 days of fund balance on hand. And one of the things that's on the agenda tonight is to talk about the use of additional dollars that will go into this same fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which ends at, on September 30th. There's about $1.4 million that will roll into the general fund and increase this amount, unless we make some choices to spend some of that money. There's your revenues, property and sales tax. And you can kind of see that they're really kind of neck and neck, depending on the year. Some years, property tax is slightly higher, some years, sales tax. Ideally, and this is part of the rationale for having Darren Ham's position, is to focus on economic development and business development. Ideally, you want that sales tax number to be just as high as it can be. And then it becomes a separate budgetary problem, because you want to make sure you're not too reliant on that sales tax with, with operation expenses. But for taxpayers, we like that line to be as hard, as high as possible and the separation to be as far as possible, because what that means is it's decreasing our property, what we have to pay in property taxes.
Just to clarify, go back to that last one, just to clarify, because those colors are really, really close, so anybody that can't tell, on the very left of 2011, property tax was higher than sales tax by $80,000. And as you go, about 2017 is where it tipped, where the sales tax was actually higher than the property tax, and it continues to increase that gap.
Yeah, I really like the, the angle and direction of that line.
Yep.
And I like the angle and direction of this line, too. I mean, ideally, again, for private taxpayers, we want that to be as minimal as possible.
And that was the year that Paul came on council, so I believe that that is credit to him and...
And the others that were here.
And the others that were here, yes.
I think we've had a good, good leadership, really, that knew what to do about finances, anyway, had to build a strong financial system. So here's revenues and expenditures with transfers. This is important because even though we were just talking about private tax and sales tax and where we want them to be, the fact of the matter is, is that in prior years, without the transfers that we were getting from the utility fund, and basically the city is in the utility business, we, we own and operate our own utilities, without that transfer, we'd be paying a lot more in property taxes. That's the, kind of, that's the takeaway from this slide, because those transfers are what has made, made up the difference between our, our sales and property tax revenues and our expenditures. So again, this gray line is the transfer line, expenditures is this dark line, and these are our revenues. So you can see revenues and, it's almost, it's, it's not quite, even this year, you know, we're not quite where, where without the transfer we'd behold, so. But again, council made the decision in this budget, or last budget cycle, to do away with the, just kind of the, a blanket transfer of some unknown quantity to actually charging a franchise fee, a rate. So we charge ourselves 3.5%. And I say ourselves, we charge the utility funds 3.5% for administrative services, and they also pay the direct expense for administrative services, for finance, for human resources, for other things that, that the utility fund benefits from. So that's how that works now. And hopefully, what that will do is make the utility fund stronger so that we can deal with some of our failing infrastructure issues. So here's your proposed revenues. There's your proposed expenditures. This is by department. Again, nothing new. You can see increases and decreases by percentage. And some of those increases, you know, some of the percentages look pretty high, like library looks really high, it's 26%, but their budgets actually are really, really small, and the amount's less than $60,000 for that increase. There's another, the rest of the expenditures. The thing to note is that your revenues and expenditures match, so this is a balanced budget. So here's another look at revenues versus expenditures with transfers in. So your transfers is that part in blue, your revenues are the part in orange, your expenditures are the kind of purplish red line. And any part, any portion above that expenditure line is what adds to the fund balance. So we looked at that fund balance a little bit ago. You could take, you could shave off those parts above that expenditure line and add them all together, and cumulatively, that's how you get to a fund balance. That's, that's what adds to your fund balance every year. And you'll see that this year, again, there's about $1.4 million in excess revenue, if you want to think of that that way. And some of that is, we're going to talk about in just a second, where that's coming from. So here's your transfers in and out. Above, that's administrative, so that's the airport actually paying the general fund for administrative services, so that's Deborah's time. And this isn't, frankly, this isn't enough, but the airport doesn't have a lot of money. But $6,000 is to cover any time that the finance office spends on airport-related issues. Deborah spends, any, any time she spends posting their agendas and dealing with other issues related to the airport, any time I spend related to the airport, that's what that amount is intended to cover. There's also a right-of-way fee that all of our ratepayers help pay for to maintain the right-of-way, and that's what that transfer is about. And then, of course, there's the utility fund administrative services that I mentioned before, and that's where they're paying for their portion of HR, finance, and the other administrative-related functions. And then these are our transfers out. And you'll see for tourism, salary benefits, and operations, we, we are going to change this next year, more than likely when we do the budget. Right now, the way the budget was kind of set up, it's, it's in the hotel occupancy tax fund, but I think what we'll do next year is we'll actually transition that and have the HOT fund making a transfer into the general fund of, of its dollars to pay for items that specifically that tax can be used to pay for, if that makes sense. So we'll show this a little differently next year, but right now, the way it's structurally working is that the general fund is transferring money into the HOT fund. There's some supplemental funding, this is what has existed prior, this is for the part-time employee that's there. And then this is our debt service contribution that the general fund's making. So here's your summary. Again, kind of the takeaway is that the budget is a balanced budget, that's what's being proposed. However, it is being balanced with fund balance, and that fund balance is being used in the ways I just showed. It's being used to pay for tourism and business development and to pay for debt service. And that, the debt service is being for, being paid for to reduce the tax rate. If we didn't do that, the tax rate would be even higher than what has been proposed. So again, this is another look at how that fund balance is being used, we've already looked at this. And this is a key takeaway, key takeaways, the proposed budget is balanced, the city is investing in equipment and training for the police department, we're going to talk about some more of that tonight. The city created a new tourism and business development position, which will increase revenue for local businesses, as you heard the mayor refer to earlier, which ideally, as we, as you look at those two lines, again, property tax doing this and sales tax doing that, going up into the right, ideally, that lowers your tax burden for your residents in the long term. And then over 70% of city revenues come from our businesses. I don't know if you mentioned that earlier, but that's a, that's a key point that I know you've shared in the past, Mayor. 6% cost of living increase for all employees making less than $65,000, and it relies on maintaining the existing tax rate of point 5233. So the important takeaway about that is if we decided to change the rate, which you can do, if you decide you wanted to, to alter the rate in some way, it would alter the budget. This is, it'd mean less revenue for the O and M side, if that's what we end up doing, then we'd have to make some changes and do some different things differently. These are, this is just the fund balance, the general fund fund balance, and this is the contribution I referred to earlier, it's about $1.4 million. All things being equal, that's what will happen, all on its own, if you don't do anything else. That's the general fund. And again, we're in the public hearing portion. Mayor and council, if y'all have any questions as I go through these, again, ideally, because it's like the sixth time, there's nothing new, but if you have any questions, please let me know. Do you want to pause for general fund questions and then go into the utility funds?
Yeah, let's pause for that.
Okay.
Starting from the public, does anybody have any questions, want any clarification on any of this? Please.
We have told you there's no frequent flyer benefits, right?
David Merz, 148 Village Path. I was looking at this earlier this week, and something that I've noticed is that it's really hard to get a grand picture, and I know you work with this all, all the time. But it's hard to get a sense of perspective on where all the money comes from and where all the money goes. And there's a, a kind of chart, I think, might be a helpful visualization called a Sankey diagram, S-A-N-K-E-Y. I'm probably mispronouncing that.
S-I-N?
S-A-N.
S-A-N-K-E-Y?
Yeah.
Sankey?
Okay. It's really helpful for visualizing that, and just sort of, as someone who wants to know what's going on, like visualizing, you know, how much money we spend on roads and what percentage of the budget that makes up, or how much of our income comes from utility bills and stuff. So just a recommendation for showing to the public.
I've done a pie chart in the past that kind of showed it by department, but I'll look into the Sankey. Thank you.
Something else that I'd recommend to anybody that wants to learn more about this, I'm, I'm with you, I've done budgets much larger than this, and just trying to understand exactly where everything's coming from. There's a lot of line items, there's a lot of differences in this, but where I found great value before I ever got onto councils, going to the budget meetings. Get in there and, and we go through a lot of that stuff. It's, to Scott's benefit, he's been able to do them primarily during city council meeting times, but sit in through those and we do go through quite a bit of detail. But we continue to try and make those more visually effective, and I think that you've probably seen some changes to the graphs as we've gone, making comparisons of revenues to expenditures to budget. So, thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah. I'd like to just summarize something that's a little different this year. Since Scott got here, he's taken charge of, of the budget process, and a lot of things that we used to discuss during council meetings aren't being discussed quite as much. But it's very important for the taxpayer to understand that the county, when the county does their tax calculations, they send us a letter every year, and they tell us what our minimum tax can be and what our maximum tax rate can be. And we don't get, we don't get any choice in that. That's by Texas law. This year, our minimum and our maximum are 12 cents apart, if you look at rates. And we picked right in the middle, the rate that, that Scott's showing you, 5233. It's six cents higher than the minimum rate we could have picked, and it's six cents lower than the maximum rate we could have picked without taking it to you for an election. And Scott mentioned, and it's very important you understand, that last year, the city council made a decision to really try and keep that 5233 constant and do it by fund balance. And what's odd about our budget this year, when you look at the budget that's on the internet that you can read, they had to make some administrative adjustments because we put so much cash into paying the interest cost. And that's the reason that the point 58 doesn't show up as the maximum possible rate. The consensus of the council was, we couldn't get along with exactly the same amount of money we had last year because you all know we're suffering with record inflation. But we thought it was fair to ask citizens to pay in the middle. So we're really asking you to pay about 1 and 1/2% more. We could have asked you to pay 3% more, but we couldn't bring ourselves to do that because we all know you're paying for inflation. So in my opinion, it's a very balanced approach, and we're going to try to follow it again next year, and we'll see what inflation does. So the bottom line is, we shared it the best we could, and we all are cognizant of the fact that if you're a homeowner, that your assessment probably went up, too. So that's going to hit you with a double whammy. So other than that, I think that's about all I could say.
Thank you, Councilman Dyar. Any more questions or comments? All right, great. Thank you, Scott.
Do you want to go over utility fund?
Please.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Utility fund, this is kind of a similar chart that we saw before, utility funds, number of days on hand and fund balance. You can see a massive dip in there. I believe that was during, it's 2017, so that's when Paul was on budgets, or on council, so probably he just spent a ton of it. I, I think that was during the time the, the plant was being built, and so what happened was there was an outflow of cash to pay for that project and an inflow of the bond sales that took place to replenish that cash that was used. That's what I would imagine happened. That's the reason you see it at right around 3 million and then backed around 2 and 1/2, because they did a reimbursement resolution of some kind to, to pay their cash back. That's what I would have done, so. So the current, you see the current balance is around 4 and 1/2 million. We have, if you were to look in our bank balances for utility fund and general fund, you, they, they're each around 8 or 9 million right now. What this reflects is not the cash on hand, it's the cash available and not, not committed in any way, shape, or form. in any way, shape or form. There's our revenues and how we make them, utility sales services, and then there's just a small amount of other revenue that comes in, kind of as services, our sources. Really? Stop it. Very sensitive. Okay. This is a kind of how the expenditures break out by department. You have utility administration. This city does it a little bit differently than some of the cities I've worked in the past, where rather than trying to capture the administration fees in every one of those utilities, they all pay into a collective, which general funds generally do and call non-departmental. And here, we just call it utility administration, so it's a little different. But gas departments, sewer department, electric, water and refuse, these are the utilities that the city owns and operates, with the exception of waste management. We have a contract for solid waste services through waste management, and we actually have them on the agenda for an amendment tonight. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Here's your revenue. This is again, similar to what we saw earlier, your revenue versus expenditures with transfers out. So you can see, there's your revenue line. Obviously, it needs to be higher than these other, otherwise you're going to be upside down. So there's your revenues. Your delta between revenues and these other numbers, so whereas we saw before, we kind of took a blue and made the fund balance, here, you're actually just taking the gap between that line and the tops of these lines, and that's your fund balance. Or if you took those and put them together, you end up with your fund balance in utility And you'll see that in future years, this transfer out, instead of being 17, 18, 20%, it's going to drop to around, I guess, 3.3 and 1/2 is what it should be. I got to think about how the, whether or not they're treating the administrative pay that we talked about as a transfer. And if they are, then that's going to, it might be more like 6.5%. It depends on what they're caught and what their total budget is and how much, what that amount is every year. But that'll drop pretty considerably next year. So there's your transfers. Again, right of way, administrative services, debt payment. Estimated expenditures and estimated fund balance. I swear, it's like reading my pulse with my finger. Estimated expenditures, estimated fund balance contribution. So there's also some things we're going to consider tonight for use of utility fund balance. They're very minor expenditures and improvements that we need to do at the, actually at the public works space. But absent any decision by council, at the end of the year, September 30th, about $660,000, probably a little bit more, will go into the utility fund fund balance. And we won't actually see that until we, well, we won't actually know what that number is until we get our final audit, which will take place probably January timeframe of next year. But these are pretty good estimates. But as Leroy included, he has his disclosure there. They're estimates only. Okay. So some major changes, these are very similar to what we saw in the general fund, the same COLO adjustments for our utility fund employees. As for our general fund, the cost here is slightly higher because there's, we have slightly more employees in utility fund than we do in the general fund. So it costs about $131,000 to do that. And then we're offering the same, obviously, 457 plan benefit there as well. Here's a summary of just kind of the budget. In this case, it is not a balanced budget, and part of that's just due because this is an enterprise. And so there, this would, if this were a private company, this would, we would look at this as profit, as potential profit. Realistically, the excess funds, which it's about $55,000, will run and roll into utility fund balance, and those are being invested in the utility. So we are issuing debt. We do plan to issue debt. There'll be an upcoming meeting where we'll talk about the other public works projects that we're embarking on. We've got a number of them. We started, very few of them have actually done much simply because of supply chain issues. But we've committed, at this stage, $5 or $6 million to utility fund improvement, or I'm sorry, public works improvements across the city. But it's just not real apparent when you drive around town, in part because some of those projects, we're waiting on supplies to get in before we can actually initiate them. And the AMI is a big one of those, and then the River Bluff Electrical Improvements is another. Okay. Airport fund. Big change here is fuel sales and the cost of fuel. Obviously, if we experience a decrease in fuel next year, then this will go down. But the expenditure side will also go down as well. So you can see kind of the delta is our markup, right? 388 to 436. And then there's that general fund transfer out that I mentioned earlier, that's $6,000. Same kind of changes there. One big change is, we reclassified the airport manager. He's now a public works assistant director. So David is now assistant director of Public Works, and he manages the airport, but he's splitting his time. So he's spending about 20% of his time, one day a week at the airport, and the other days at Public Works. And we've been able to recalibrate, I don't know, reapply his salary, repurpose his salary to add an additional person at the airport. So we now have a gentleman that's working full-time there. His name's Pete, doing a great job for us. And then we also have Isa, who's worked there for years, who's now on part-time. He's a part-time employee for the city. Tourism and business development, this is our new position. And like I said, I think next year, this will actually be a general fund line item. And rather than showing it as a hot fund with general funds rolling into it, we'll show it as a general fund with hot funds rolling into it. Because honestly, general funds is the one that's spending more money at this stage. So there's the total budget, $231,000. Your hotel motel tax is around 70. Important to note, one of the things that's in front of you right now is the agreement for short-term rental collections. We anticipate that this amount should increase by at least 50%. So we've collected a minimum, hopefully another $35,000, but we could collect as much as 50,000 or 60,000 just in the, in the short-term rental revenue that the city has not been getting. And I think mostly, it's not that anybody's purposely doing anything illegal, they just don't know. And so we're instituting a process that will begin to collect that, and that'll, that'll help reduce the reliance on the general fund greatly out of this fund. And then this is just how those expenditures are broken out. And you'll see, there's a pretty good chunk in here for purchase services. Don't ask me what those are. Or repair, yeah, repairs and maintenance is Steinbach. But these are kind of fat, fat finger numbers, supplies. We knew there'd be toner, and there'd be ink, there'd be t-shirts and ball caps, and who knows else, other things related to tourism and marketing that we'll need to do, especially in the areas of advertising. And so we just kind of put some numbers into their first year to make sure that Darren could be successful in his first 12 months. Okay. There's the summary. And this, y'all have already seen this before. We're going to have a separate meeting on CIP, but this just talks about some of the projects that we've already started. The improvements to the library, you can see there's a new drive lane. We've got a new covered book drop-off, and the Keyos will be going live very, very soon. There's been, we're going to talk tonight about some city hall, it says renovation, it's really the roof repair and the police building roof repair as well. Animal control was mentioned earlier tonight. We made some great improvements to the animal control building itself and made some investments The G I S system, it didn't cost nearly what we thought it might. We're going to spend about $25,000 instead of $250,000, and that should be going live very, very soon. Lions Park, we've committed a little over $250,000 to put in a splash pad, as was mentioned earlier, and do some other improvements there. Very excited about those. That splash pad is imminent. It's unfortunate, it's coming at a time when we're in stage three drought. So more than likely, we'll put it in, but we won't turn it on. If we turn it on, it won't be on for very long for that reason. Obviously, these plans started well before we were in a drought.
And just to clarify, the splash pad, those actually reuse water?
No.
That one does not reuse water?
No. And there's, no, it doesn't, I'm sorry. But no. Because it's way more expensive to reuse the water, and there's a tremendous liability on the city if you use reused water. The likelihood of getting sick because of E. coli.
Bacteria and all that.
It's way, way higher.
They didn't think about that in the ice bucket challenge that I was in.
No. Well, yeah. So, yeah. So as far as regional park, you have the lights have been installed there, made some improvements in the September square, some lighting. Street overlay maintenance is really amounts to what the county, the work the county did. We've encumbered a little bit more in some equipment that's been purchased. We are in the process of engineering the street improvements. I really would like to already have those underway, but more than likely, it won't be underway until September. And then we've put some money on vehicle equipment replacement. We've got a lot more encumbered in utility funds, and again, the smart meter program, $2 million is already encumbered. We've got a tremendous amount in the electrical project we talked about for River Bluff. Some vehicles and equipment has been replaced. CCTV, we spent about $100,000 looking at our sewer system to determine where do we actually need to make improvements and do some planning around that. Yeah. It shows River Bluff at $709,000 is encumbered. There's really more than that, because we actually bought about $400,000 in supplies on the city's dime. So that's, that should be showing up here as well. So that is it, I think. We've got, let me see, I'm sorry. Debt service funds, I think this is it. We talked a little bit earlier about the amounts that are being transferred out from the general fund, the utility fund for debt service. This debt service fund is what is statutorily required when you issue debt. It's basically an escrow account that houses your money to pay off your bonds to ensure the bondholders that you do have money to pay those bonds. So this is kind of a clearinghouse for your debt payments. And there's your utility fund debt. And that is it for the budgetary, or the utility funds. Utility fund and other special revenue funds.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the audience and council?
Appreciate your patience, since it was almost an hour. Is there anybody? No thanks.
Great. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing then at 6:46. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on an amendment to the waste management
There's a, in your packets, council, there's a agenda summary form that just kind of summarizes what we're doing and why. There are some things that were in our contract that were happening kind of mid-year, and I want to recognize Chris Cox, who is here from Waste Management and can answer or speak from concerns or issues you have. But the short of the, kind of the story on the proposal is that this is, one, brought about at staff's request. So this isn't Waste Management requesting to make these changes, this is staff requesting that we update the contract to comport with what we're trying to do as best practices. And two, they, you know, they've met all of our, so it's at our request and at our recommendation that we approve it, because it's, they've met all of our requests, we're very happy with what they've brought forward. Was that, I don't know, I mean, it's your item.
Actually, I wasn't ready to speak on this one.
That's okay. So if you'd like, Mayor, I can summarize those of the amendment changes?
Yes, please.
Okay. And like I said, this is in a summary form. There are a couple of key changes. One is that our bulk pickup, we're going to go to, once every other month, we'll still get bulk pickup, it's kind of confused, we'll still get bulk pickup every single month. But one of those pickups will be bulky pickup, and it's defined as bulky items that are not brushed. And the other month, the opposite month, the alternate month, will be brush pickup. And brush pickup will be defined as a six-yard, no, larger than six-yard pile of brush that is no bigger around in diameter than four inches and no longer in length than four feet. And part of this goes back to kind of, we have some issues. And I, I want to stress, the reason this is important, that we work with code enforcement and work with our public, is because it is costing every one of us to just drag, like in a storm, we just drag that 24-foot long branch, all these branches coming off, we drag it out to the curb. It's caught, in the long run, it's costing us more money to be able to do that than if we took the time to cut that up into four-foot lengths, put it in a nice little pile, because it's a lot more efficient from a solid waste standpoint. It's more efficient if they can grab those piles and throw them in there as opposed to some of the piles we've been dealing with. We've been dealing with big 15, 20-yard piles of debris. That takes a lot of time, a lot of man-hours, and a lot of gas and a lot of fuel, and we're all, at the end of the day, when they come back and renew their contract, they're going to charge us for it. And so part of this is a desire to make the collection process as efficient as possible. And at the, from the outside, you might think, well, that's just benefiting Waste Management. Now I'm going to have to do all this work as a homeowner and take the brush. But truly, it's benefiting us in the long term, because ideally, we can reflect that in our, it'll be reflected in our future contract negotiations, because we're making for an efficient pickup process. So it does, so that's one of the major changes in there. And then the other changes, I request, we discussed and I requested and they agreed to, no additional charge to us, to take on the commercial billing for the city. So they're going to, we'll handle the residential accounts, but they'll handle the commercial accounts. The reason that's important is there's a lot lost in translation for commercial customers when they aren't getting the right pickup schedule, that maybe there's trash that's overflowing because their container's too small, or because it's not being picked up frequently enough. Those are things that are best handled directly between the provider and the customer. And so I want to remove my staff from that, because again, I think things get lost in translation, people get frustrated, and they're willing to do it at no extra cost to us. So that's, that's great. And they'll still pass along our, we charge a markup, they'll collect that markup and pass it along to us, which is also great. Those are the major changes. It's really only a couple. Did I miss anything, Chris? Is there, would you mind if Chris clarified a couple items?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I'm Chris Cox with Waste Management. So I understand that one of the main requests was that we want to cover is also a prior notification a little sooner than, than normal.
Oh, that's right. That was important to you.
Yeah. That's very important. I understand that there was some concern expressed by council at a council meeting that Waste Management didn't provide enough notice, right? We actually did meet with Scott and Leroy about a month prior to providing the notice. And to Scott's credit, he fought for you guys and said, I need to speak to council, I need to find ways to absorb this impact to our businesses and our residents. So rather than us providing the contractual annual adjustment as noted in our agreement in June, when we spoke to him in May, we held off until July. And so what Scott, in, you know, his response to some of the concerns y'all expressed, we've actually worked together to identify how we will provide notice of the annual adjustments, the rate calculation in May, and that will give you all five months lead time to prepare for that in October. So that provides Leroy the information he needs going into that budget preparation cycle in May, rather than in June, in line with the anniversary date of the contract. So we're step, you know, moving that forward a month, but then also holding the actual assessment of those new fees until October of each year.
Yeah. So we had a, I mean, I know you remember folks, the folks watching and here present may not know that our Waste Management fee went up by about 13%. That's what, that's what Chris is referring to. The city made the decision not to pass it on to our customers. So we are, we're eating that additional cost right now. It isn't, it isn't resulting in a net revenue or a net loss, because we had a little bit of a markup on there that, it's just eating into that. So we will still break even on waste, on our solid waste services for the year. But this allows us to put the timing of those rate changes in conjunction with our budget, which I'm very grateful to Waste Management for allowing us to do that. And I'm sure that Chris had some difficult conversation with his upper management to allow that, because statutorily, they could give it to us in May and need, and in the past, it's always come and do effective July. The other amendment, the other major change in the amendment, there's really three, is that now that, now that rate change will be aligned to be effective October 1st. So that's great.
We have been keeping a roll-off container at the Public Works office for some citizens who might have.
Yeah, none of that's changing. So the only amendments are the ones I mentioned. All the other terms in the contract remain as they are. And, you know, again, I'm not, I don't need to pat Waste Management too hard on the back, they're good people, but they have been great partners in that respect. We've asked for roll-offs numerous times. It's been a real challenge sometimes, not because of their unwillingness, they've been very willing to help. It's just been, there's been times when everybody needed a roll-off in San Antonio, and so we were fighting with. And so we were fighting with literally everybody across San Antonio to drag it or roll off here.
Everybody here needed a roll-off.
I think they've been good partners in that respect, especially with our spring cleanups.
Yeah.
So on brush pickup, what's going to be the first one if this goes into effect October? Will we do brush pickup first or are we going to do bulk?
There's a calendar, it actually lists the months, and I honestly don't remember them. I can pull them up though.
Okay, I see it here. It says brush will be February, April, June, August, and October, and December. And then bulk will be the other six months.
And we'll get that out in-
That's what my question was going to be, if we can make sure we get that out for customers to know.
Darren Hamm's not listening, but I'll make sure that he knows tomorrow that we put that in the next-
Okay. And it says to be placed on the curb the weekend of the appropriate month. Which weekend?
Should be the first weekend, right?
Weekend prior, yeah. So it is the first weekend, we go into the second month, second week of every month, I believe.
First full week.
First full week, excuse me, sorry.
That's why I'm asking the question.
It is a little convoluted. It's the weekend of the first full week of the month that you do your bulk pickup, right?
Correct, yeah.
So that's not changing.
Okay, so the last weekend of the month before bulk pickup is what we're saying?
Yes.
Because we're going to have to get that out there for our people to understand.
What I would just suggest to everybody to do, and you won't get a code enforcement complaint, put it out the first weekend of the month, every month.
First weekend of the month?
Yes, because then you're covered. I'm just saying from, if you're a homeowner, you're putting something out, you will not get a call from code enforcement if it's out a week early, right?
Okay.
We'll allow for that. But just to be on the safe side, first weekend of the month. They will not pick it up until the first full weekend of the month, the weekend of the first full week of the month.
Okay, I was about to say, you say weekend, it's like-
Right.
And I might mention something. You know, we are very happy to work with our public affairs team to create some communication material that the city can put out. I know we did that the early part of the agreement. We're happy to do it, especially with these adjustments that are happening, so we can partner with your staff to do that.
That'd be great. Be welcome.
Councilman Dyer?
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I got this right. So in addition to your gas bill going up about 50% on the 1st of October at your house-
Maybe. That's if we stick with what's going on.
Maybe, but that's probable. Now we should expect also about a 13% increase in residential garbage collection. Is that reasonable?
Maybe. One of the things that staff is going to bring to you is the fee schedule. And what we're proposing for residential rates is that we reduce the city's administrative fee to absorb some of that increased cost. That's our recommendation. Ultimately, the council is going to adopt the fees, and that'll be something you all discuss. But we're going to recommend that we reduce it for residential residences.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I think cost across the board, when you look at the cost of acquiring power, the cost of providing any of these services, they're all going up. And I think that we should expect that. It's, somebody told me once that stresses when what you expect to happen and what actually happens aren't the same. And so I think that right now, in this time of insane inflation, we need to expect that things are going to go up and prepare for them. And staff has done a great job, I think, in doing that, in anticipating it and dealing with it appropriately. And we do need to try and minimize.
Because we're going to have a new utility provider. And we already know that it's going to be a little higher than the old one. So come the October, November, December period, people in this town are going to be shocked when they open their utility bills.
They'd be a lot more shocked if we didn't switch.
I know, that's why I'm glad we're getting it out. I'm complimenting the city staff, but at the same time, I'm trying to make people aware, you know, get ready. Because you're going to be in for a boost.
Well, I'm a taxpayer and a ratepayer and a single, you know, earner family, so, I mean, yeah, I get it.
I might also mention, I mean, the rates have already been adjusted for this year. So, I mean, if that means anything, at least on Waste Management, then this adjustment of rates won't happen until next year.
Right. Well, we haven't passed on those rates to the customers yet. And we adopted, so what we chose to do is absorb the rate increase for three months and then look at, give council the opportunity to look at what their rate, they want the rates to be for next year and just make a determination there. And like I said, I think the staff recommendation is going to be to lower our admin fee by 5%.
Sure.
It won't absorb the entire increase, but it will absorb some of it, so.
And I think Councilman Dyer had the absolute right approach with this. He's saying, let's make sure that we're communicating with people so that they're not surprised by this. And I think that we have a lot of opportunities for better communication. We've talked about some of those in terms of making sure that we're getting things tagged, making sure that there's a close coordination between your drivers and our code enforcement so that we can follow up on these things. Because I get, I get calls about, I shouldn't get calls about these, but I get calls about these, about one side, my neighbor's stuff hasn't been picked up. On the other side, my neighbor's stuff is getting picked up. And so there's this frustration in the inconsistency. And I know that we've discussed that, but I think that's a great opportunity for us to continue to improve that. The one thing I don't like about the change in the pickup schedule is it requires even more communication. So I would encourage you to work with our, with Darren Hamm on getting that out. Thank you for offering to help out with the collateral because we're going to have to over-communicate on this. Otherwise, it leads to just mass frustration. I like to keep people from getting frustrated.
Understood.
And thank you, I know that Waste Management has stepped up on a number of occasions with different grant opportunities, with providing services. There was somebody that was in need, that needed to haul off a building that had to get destroyed. And thank you for offering that up for free to help some folks out. So I do believe, I don't like the rate increases, I don't like the inconsistencies, but, and I think that we have lots of opportunities for improvement. But I think that you've been a good partner, you've been very communicative with us.
Sure, I appreciate it. One thing I did, you know, I'm happy to mention too, that Scott requested, but it's actually a benefit to Waste Management, is the fact that we're going to have a designated point of contact within this agreement. You know, for some time, prior to Scott being here, we dealt with a lot of different folks, a lot of different departments, you know, understanding different city managers who we even worked with, even through the negotiation of this. So I appreciate Scott offering that. And I think without having funneling that communication is going to be something that's going to be very helpful to make sure that we're getting the right information out and there's less, I guess, less alleged discrepancies on what we're doing versus what we're contracted to do. So I appreciate that, Scott.
One other question regarding the commercial side, how are we going to let businesses know?
It'll be pretty seamless to them, but-
But if they have problems or something like that, how are they going to be notified?
So we're not pulling the trigger on that, you know, tomorrow. There's a lead time to it, we'll work with your billing staff, your utility billing staff. This won't take effect until October. So we'll work in conjunction with your staff to notify them both on the side of the city. Maybe we can put together a letter and notify, and email, if you all have emails with them. But then we'll also be contacting the residents, the business, excuse me, the businesses as well, and make attempts to set up electronic accounting profiles within our system so that we can go.
Okay.
But this is going to happen in October, so we got some lead time, we'll start working tomorrow.
But you'll still accept, like, checks from the businesses? Because not all of them use electronic payment?
I'm not sure if we accept checks, but-
It's something that you might want to look at, because some of these businesses don't have electronic. I can tell you right now, the city, for the business I work for, they receive a check every day, every month. So something to look at.
Sure.
All righty.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate that.
The motion here is to approve the amendment to the Waste Management contract as proposed. Do I have a motion?
I will move that we approve the amendment to the Waste Management contract as proposed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next item, consider and take appropriate action on a resolution accepting a petition from Cobblestone Village for a public improvement district.
For this item, Mayor, this is largely perfunctory in the stage that you're not, you're accepting a petition, you're not establishing the Pid, you're not establishing a rate, you're not establishing a floor for a rate. All of that will happen at a subsequent meeting that will have to be properly noticed. So this is simply a petition, and this is part of what we have required of them in order to participate in the Phase 2 water plan. We had hoped to bring all of the various developers at the same time, to have all their Pid petitions heard at the same time. Unfortunately, we didn't get all those agreements by the time the packet was, needed to be put together on Wednesday. So we only have this one tonight, but I fully anticipate at subsequent meetings, potentially at the very next meeting, we'll have a couple more petitions. The next stage after this petition, this particularly one for Cobblestone, will be a public hearing to actually establish the Pid. And there's still some negotiation to take place between myself and Clay Benford, who you all have authorized to negotiate on the city's behalf about that Pid, about what all it entails, what all it's going to include, et cetera.
And for the general public, so that you understand-
Oh, yeah.
Kind of the foundation of what's going on. I know that we're using a lot of terms that you might not be familiar with. This is, this is setting the stage for them to be able to pay for the water improvements that are going to be necessary for the developments. So the Pid is actually a reimbursement. They will put up the funds that are required to pay for those water improvements. And this allows them to get reimbursed, not from existing citizens, but from the new residents, the new, the new people in their subdivision. The users, right. The people that are going to be consuming it are the ones that will be paying for it, they're just fronting the money.
And we do have representatives from Cobblestone, if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I know we've gone over this a lot, but anything outstanding? All right. So I think the motion is to adopt the resolution for the public improvement district from Cobblestone Village is presented. Do I have a motion? Sorry, was that Paul? Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Great, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you being here.
Next item is consider and take appropriate action on applications submitted for open positions on city boards and commissions.
Sorry. We have one application tonight, y'all did see it last meeting, from Beatrice. And she is a current full board member and has asked that y'all consider her to be reappointed. And so, and then we still will have an open position, full board position to fill.
All right. Any discussion? So Councilman Carey, you're the council liaison?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on this?
I think that Beatrice has done a very thorough job of attending meetings and being part of all the operations of the zoning board of adjustments over her previous tenure. And I would move to reappoint her.
Great.
I'll second it.
Well, that was a motion. You guys are fast, I got a motion from Councilman Carey, a second for Councilman Dyer. We'll see. Are you sleeping here? All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
In this lull, Mayor, I can't help but notice we have some people in uniforms that are not, do not work for the city that are present.
Well, we could change that.
Yeah.
I would say that they do work in the city.
Potentially.
Just not for the city.
Potentially. So we have some members of Boy Scout troop, what troop are you with?
471.
471? And this is for the citizenship of the community or citizenship of the nation, Mayor Madge? I think you're satisfying two requirements right now, both nation and community. But, but that's great, we're glad you're here. I remember being at a City of Fort Worth meeting and not understanding a word. I sat in the back. All I know is that one of the council members was on the phone, like, came in, laid, was on her phone, was doing other stuff. I was like, wow.
Wonderful job.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Welcome to the body here.
Hope you get your badge.
And for context, I'm not sure if there's anybody else, but Scott is, was an Eagle Scout.
Yeah, my son got his Eagle Scout through 471.
Out of the park, yeah. Thank you, guys, for joining us. Ellie, next time, put the glasses beforehand?
I have.
Oh, I know, I know, I saw.
I had surgery in my eye, so I can't really look at it like, sorry.
Wear the glasses beforehand, we want to keep you safe.
All the time.
Yeah, if you'd like to come to the, I mean, I should say, they are still allowed that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, put your glasses on.
Put them on.
I'm so sorry, I got surgery in my eye last week. My name is Elliot Arroyo, I live in 2109 Geneva. I am the scout master of 3471. And I have a little comment about what they were talking about earlier, about the disposal of the branches and everything. I understand that it's preferable to have it in certain size, but we need to think that we have older people in this community and plus, maybe they don't have the equipment to cut it. If that situation happened and anybody need help, the Boy Scouts, they always have to do community service. So if somebody approached to you guys and you guys passed the information, we could help them. And the Boys will be doing their community service at the same time.
That's wonderful.
So just keep it in mind, you guys can announce it, we don't have any problem. And even if the Scout, they already finished the community service, I always try to help. The mayor knows that I always volunteer with the community to go and help in whatever, whatever we can.
Every time we have a citywide- Every time we have a citywide cleanup?
Yes, sir. Now I have a tractor, so I can help a little bit more with a graver. So-
I think I want to say, didn't you change your eyeshop?
Wait, wait, yes. I got a splinter in my eye and I destroyed my eye and now I got a surgery. We were in a high adventure event and, yeah, it was no glass. And it was just breaking it like this and the splinter went in my eye, so, anyway.
Hope it gets better.
But thank you for allowing us to be here, the Scouts are doing the requirements for their merit badge and their advancing ranks. So thank you for allowing us to participate.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
So you, he probably already knows, but Carol Brooks, I think we have amazing staff in a lot of different ways. And she runs, she helps organize community-wide cleanup events. And we, she's also working with various church groups to help elderly and other people who can't clean up their yards, for whatever reason, disabled or for other reasons, to do that very thing. So we will, if you don't already have her contact information, I need to get yours before, just leave it on paper or write it and leave it for me.
I can give it to you.
I'll make sure that I connect the two of you, so.
I can give it to you, I've got it.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Great, thank you for this commercial interruption.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well worth the time. All right, so the, the next action is consider and take appropriate action on approving general fund balance purchases. So we've got a lot of items on here. I think there are some that are crucial and some that are enhancement ideas. And I think that, I think it would be prudent for us to go through the ones that are, let's address them all. But I think that, let's, let's talk about the ones, look at approving the ones that are immediate needs. And for the other ones, I think it would be a good idea to have a workshop to kind of walk through this bigger picture, look back at what the identified priorities are. I know that Scott has asked for different input on that. I think it would be good if we had a workshop that was dedicated specifically to do that. We can invite people, invite the public so that they can weigh in on that. But I think that that should be, especially for this amount, I think this would be prudent to do as like a concerted, dedicated exercise. If you'd be okay with that.
And for the rest of the council's benefit, it's a shame that Harold and Phil are not here. But I realized after talking to the mayor that I didn't do a good enough job explaining what we're doing. And part of this, this is my first full year to manage the budget. If you manage a budget appropriately, you will end up with excess money at the end of the year because you should be conservatively estimating your revenues and expenditures. It's not about overcharging your ratepayers or your taxpayers. You know, again, as a ratepayer and taxpayer, I don't want that either. But it's, it's the best, following best practices in government finance that you should end up with some amount of money at the end of the year because you're going to conservatively estimate those revenues, conservatively estimate the expenditures so that you have a little bit less than you thought you were going to spend, and you're going to get a little bit more than you thought you were going to get in revenue. And that ends up in a fund balance. And what that does on an annual basis is it ideally creates, and this is what I've done in past cities I've worked in, it ideally creates an opportunity for the elected officials to look at their priorities, as you just suggested, Mayor, and think about quality of life initiatives, generally one-time expenditures. So, yeah, I generally recommend not trying to do things that would impact the operations budget, unless, of course, it aligns with what your long-term objectives are. But it allows an opportunity for the elected officials to look at these one-time expenditures, and the amount fluctuates from year to year. It just so happens this year, we have a ton. And a lot of that, $780,000 of that, is federal money that's coming to us. And the way that we're applying that is, as X, as, we took the option of saying it was revenue loss during COVID. Even though we didn't experience any, the federal government in its infinite wisdom said, you know what, we don't want to do all this paperwork. And if you, if you're a city that- We don't want to do all this paperwork. And if you, if you're a city that gets less than $10 million, you can just select this, which is basically my, the way I look at it is like the AMT, the alternative minimum tax for the taxpayers in the room, the joys that our youth are going to get to look forward to in the future. So I wanted to be clear with the council, you know, I don't have, I asked staff, I said, look, you know, we've got a pretty good fund balance. Do you have anything you want to propose to council? So that's what part of this list is. But then you also got a bunch of other stuff to kind of give you some flavor and idea of different things that your, for instance, the Parks Board has looked at in their plan and some other ideas. But my, my, I guess advocacy would be simply for, for you as elected officials to look at, well, what, what do your constituents most need? And you have board liaisons in every board and committee that, that the city has established. I would strongly encourage you as council members to, to approach your, the board that you're a liaison for and just ask them, you know, what is the quality of life, some one-time expenditures, one-time things we can do as an improvement to help further your mission in some way, shape, or form. And again, it won't be this, you will not have this amount of money next year. I would anticipate on average somewhere between $150,000 and $300,000 a year in excess reserves of some kind. It will fluctuate within those, generally it's going to fluctuate within those numbers. All right, I'm going to have to eject you. So just, just know that this is the product of good financial management. And that was the goal, and I don't think I stated it very well when, when I brought it to you before. So I apologize for that. So yeah, the only, I mean, I guess, Mayor, it's your discussion. The items that I think we desperately need to take care of. I have the PD server on here. And really, there's a PD, so there's two PD servers that we're talking about. There's a PD server there that is out of warranty, no longer supported. I've got to replace. I'm not going to ask for permission for it. It's in the budget already. We're just going to replace that. Separate from that is the software improvement that the chief has requested, which is to move to encode and to be on the same system that he was on in Bernie and that they use at the county, so we can be on the same wavelength with the county and share data with them. That's very important. It's important for safety for our officers. In conjunction with that, there are two options. So, so I want, just clarifying, there's two PD servers we're talking about. One, I'm going to take care of. The other is really about the software. When we purchase the software, we can choose to purchase on-premises servers and, that we own and maintain. Or we can choose to use it more as a software as a service, as the mayor's alluded to before, where they maintain all of our information and data. And there's, there's a cost comparison for both. The upfront cost, so how do you want to do this?
Well, I think that, let's walk through it.
Walk one at a time. I'll start with servers, but
Yeah, I think we start with the cloud-based versus on-premises. I don't feel like we have quite enough detail for that. I think that we're really, really close. I believe that we really need to do that. So if we need to, to move on it quicker, then please let me know. But like with software as a service, it's not just, you know, providing the software as a service, but they provide all of the maintenance costs, which I don't feel like you've captured in here. If we have our own servers, then we're paying the additional cost of keeping them up.
No, he didn't, his number, if you're talking about the numbers that he shared, that Jim shared with you and I, I, I think he aimed too low for, for, yeah, I would agree that we don't, we may not have precisely the information we need to do a true cost comparison of doing an on-premises versus off-premises. But I think he, I think, I can speak to the fact, and you and I can probably speak to the fact that he understated the amount that would be needed. Yeah, the delta. Because in my view, after looking at those numbers and looking at like a 10-year cost, my recommendation would be to go with off-premises. Do a cloud-based for the software, just for the software, for the encode software. Because I believe that number one, it's going to be slightly more money doing it that way, but only slightly. And the benefits way outweigh, like the challenges you could have doing it the other way are way higher and could potentially be way more costly than if you allow, if you just basically sign up for the agreement with the encode and allow them to handle all the headache.
Before you start talking about the money, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
We have three other encode products now. Are they
At least three.
Which, which are they? Are they cloud services that we're buying? Or do we own them and have them on-site?
That's a great question. So we
Because I'd like to be consistent. To change the policy.
Well, it kind of depends on our, our purchase cycle. But that, that's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that.
That is a great question. We, we maintain everything on-site, I believe. All of our encode software is, it's all on-site. So it's on-premises.
On our own computers. They provide external support
Yes.
to it.
Yes.
And, and we have a contractor some kind.
Yes.
Do we have any cloud backup for the data? Or is the data just stored here on our computer? And if we get a lightning strike?
Uh, no. So there is a, so there is a backup policy through HDS. And I think that's, they, they laid that out in their RFP they put together. So they have
Couldn't figure it out.
Okay. Well, so they do have, they do have off-site backup. And then we have our servers and our, and our data that we store locally. So there are
You're suggesting that we should do the same thing with the police department?
Um, no, I'm, I'm suggesting differently because to your point, that'd be great if we could afford to do that with all of our services. And maybe that's something we can negotiate with encode about, you know, in using this as an opportunity to negotiate for cloud-based services for the other things as well. That could be something we could talk about. I really didn't think about it until you brought it up, Herb, but
Well, what that does is that reduces, if you look at, one of the things that Herb has been the most concerned with is with that, that IT contract, the increased amount for having that service, not having to have that. So I, again, I think
I know, I'm sorry, but I know ADP, when we transitioned our HR, so, so the way encode works, which is encode is a, is a software platform provided by Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is its parent company. ENCODE is just like one of their softwares, right? But that software, much like a Microsoft product like Office, has different modules that go with it. And so there's a police module, there is a municipal court module, which we already subscribe to. There's a, there's a general ledger module, which we already subscribe to. There's a utility billing module, which we already subscribe to. There was an HR module, which we used to subscribe to, but we outsourced to ADP. ADP is a cloud-based system. It is very, it's, it's very similar to what we're looking at for the PD. So I, I think there's probably some opportunity to negotiate that other piece of putting the city's other services on a cloud-based solution. But honestly, I haven't looked into that because I didn't even think about that until Herb brought it up.
Regarding that, what are, what's state law and all that regarding any, that kind of, that information in cases and all that out on the cloud?
I'll use the word Scott uses, the acronym. It's SEGA, Criminal Justice Information Systems. Tyler is, is, they're all SEGA compliant.
Okay.
I did talk, when I was talking to Tyler, my sticker shock on the cloud-based, talking to them, he said, what happens in a lot of the, what I would say, the departments that are smaller, like the Panhandle or West Texas or something like that, they choose the cloud-based because they do nothing. They handle all the maintenance, everything. So there's nothing, if you've got a problem with that server or anything else, you're not dealing with it. Tyler's dealing with it. And that's the same would be here is essentially Tyler, once it's in the cloud, Tyler deals with everything. You don't, that's included in the contract, the maintenance.
So we don't need the server? We do that?
No, the server comes into play with the stuff at the PD, as well as some, some requirements with the new body worn cameras and the cameras that are going to be
That's what I said. There's still, there's always going to be an onsite server for PD.
It's basically an intake server.
Right.
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 You still need the server for other
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the one that we have right now is 10 years old. I think that you guys were discussing this
We already
three years ago and it got denied and it's Yeah. well out of warranty?
Yeah.
Just a little bit.
Well, out of warranty?
Well
Just like everything else we've discussed.
Well, you know, a lot of it is just looking at it from seeing what we're wanting to do with Tyler. At first, we thought, well, we'll just use the iPads for the ticket riders. Well, each particular piece of equipment you're getting charged for. So I went back to them. I said, okay, we're not going to do the iPads. If we go to the iPads, if it gets approved, we'll go to the ticket riders and officers can check them in and out. So you reduce the cost by half on that side of it. So trying to reduce that cost and get the best bang for the buck, you know, because I know how
You know how to do that?
change.
You know how to do that?
Yes, sir.
That's great. It's good to know.
We're the fire department, sir, I'm telling you.
I doubted a little bit. I've been doubting a little bit, though. There's a lot of needs at the PD. I'm, I'm giving Jim a hard time because, because he's had a lot of fairly expensive ticket items that, that we need to take care of. So it's fun to give him a hard time. But I know truthfully, what he and I have been laboring over for the last while is how, how can we, how much of this can we make a one-time expense versus an ongoing expense? And we're trying to minimize that ongoing expense. But there's just a certain amount of it that's unavoidable. So with the tasers we purchased, there's annual maintenance or whatever you have to pay for those. That, that, it's not a lot, but it just adds up, you know? And so we're trying to minimize that as much as possible.
Everything seems to be four to six months. Once, if Tyler does get approved, it's four to six months. The radios, four to six months. And the other things that, looking at it in here, the cost, I mean, the cost is going up each month. It's a little bit scary, a little bit scary. I talked to the Honda chief today, and he said, good luck ordering cars. He said they went up $8,000. So
And y'all already get a pretty good deal. Like, I, I'm always jealous of the deal that, that governments get on when they're buying a, a vehicle, a truck or whatever, because it's, it's easily, you know, two-thirds of the cost of what, what everybody else pays.
Yes, sir.
I still haven't figured out a scheme where I can end up getting a car that I pay for.
You can. It's probably not real legal, but
No. I know somebody did it. They got caught, and it wasn't good. I'm not doing that. I think we have a couple
Okay.
So I think that we have, if, if I'm correct, I think that we're getting closer on the records management software. I don't know, are we there yet?
Well, here's what I would like. We just need to move, I, I want to get off the center. I want us to be able to move forward with this. The cost is, is going to be substantially similar between an onsite or an off-premises. It's just, the long-term costs, when you look over a 10-year period, they, they get really close to being, close, you know, close to the same amount. So what I would like to do is get some kind of provisional, you know, permission to go, at least place it on order so that we can get in that train. Because the longer we wait, the longer, the more expensive it's going to be and the longer it's going to take to actually implement it. In the meantime, we've got a broken system that is causing all kinds of pandemonium for
Yeah, I, I really think that with the, the PD server that's out of warranty, substantially out of, can I say that again? Substantially out of warranty?
Well, that, like I said, that's not even on your agenda. As far as I'm concerned. I know, but I, I left it on so we could talk about
Okay.
the other, the other part of it.
So the radios and the software are on there. I think the radios are a no-brainer. I do still want to hear what's happening with the existing radios.
The existing radios, I have not reached out to anybody if they're going to purchase them. There's an idea, you know, you look at from what I've seen in other, they say, well, we'll just put them to the Parks Department. We'll put them somewhere else. The way cell phones are, you know, but if the cell phones go down
Have you noticed the cell phone service in Castroville?
It's terrible, sir. I just got off the phone with AT&amp;T and, and complained
Yes.
when the tower's so close and the service is so poor. But I could still look at, like I said, we've got radios that are in the box. We've got radios that are, I mean, outdated. That I don't, you know, they're back in the barn back there, that I don't know where they came from. So looking at that. But we could probably repurpose them. I don't know. I haven't reached out to the guy. I'm sure it's pennies on the dollar.
Right. And I don't, I don't think it's, I think we just need to, I don't think that needs to be a part of this decision. I think the PD radios, you've already identified the need for those.
Right.
The need to be able to intercommunicate. So I, I think that is kind of a no-brainer. So which of the PD items are we actually talking about that you need a decision on then? Is it the radios and the software?
Well, really, the chief just wanted to ask about that. But I think, yeah, I think it's the software and the radios. So, because like I said, the server's really actually a non-issue. But the, there is a server-related issue that could come into play based on the software. That's the only reason it stayed on the list. So it's really the software and some kind of provisional approval. And Mayor, I mean, I know this puts you in a little bit of a uncomfortable position, but if the council's comfortable in basically giving you the permission to make the determination whether it's onsite or off-premises, and give staff the opportunity to negotiate the other, we would bring that back as a separate budgetary item. We would look at whether it was, it was, made sense to move our current modules to an off-premises support as well.
Then we can bring that back.
Look at those costs. But to the degree that you feel like there's more data that needs to be crunched, I would like the council to give you approval to make that call once you feel you've got the data that you need.
I think we're really close. If you're comfortable with that, I am.
I've been running my own, you know, I've been my own IT manager for 30 years. The, yeah. So the thing, I always love it when my computer says, please contact your service administrator.
I know he's a really busy guy.
But that is, that is an expense that is not quantifiable when we're looking at the difference between onsite and, and cloud-based, because somebody has got to manage that system when it's in your office. And those can be hours and hours and hours a year, so.
And a loss productivity as well.
And loss productivity.
Kind of like having our officers out there.
I'm, I'm leaning, well, I, I, I think I'll, I'll take the city administrator's suggestion. And I would like to, just, I support having, giving you the opportunity to pull the trigger on that when you see fit.
So let's talk about the, so items by item, the radios
Hold on, just one second. So
Go ahead. Sorry.
You look like you had a comment on that as well.
Sorry.
I think we've discussed this series of issues in a number of different meetings. And I'm very comfortable knowing all that I've heard and what I've read and asking the city administrator to finalize the first three. The radios, the RMS software and the server. If there's any issues, I think you should take them to the mayor. And the mayor can decide whether we need to have a further meeting about it. But I'm satisfied that we have a good solution here. And I have confidence in the staff that, that we're going to get the best price we can get. And it's going to be a little bit of, there's going to be a lot of numbers here, I can tell you. I've been in this business.
I will say this, the relationship that I've had with Tyler, and when I told them, you know, look, this is really expensive for annual reoccurring, they really stepped up to the plate and, and reduced that cost based on that partnership and as well as working together, probably significantly. I'll leave it at that, significant reduction. I know Scott, I did do it, but, you know, we, we did reduce it some.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I was very happy with, very happy with.
Yeah, I can't remember what it, what was the original proposal, ongoing? You got 30 grand?
Thirty-something thousand, 32,000. And I think we're at almost like 20,300.
Wow.
So significant.
So our total, so the ra, and this is just to, to the audience and everyone else knows what we're talking about. So the radio cost, we're talking about is 67,000. That's the proposal to buy the radios. And it would be a price not to exceed, right? So if we could do something cheaper, we would. The software cost, when we looked at like a 10-year cost, you're looking at around $118,000 or something for
Yes, yes.
No, is that right?
No.
No, that can't be right. It's two, it'd be, if it's 20,000, a hundred years, Scott, that's 200,000 just by itself.
The first year doesn't count.
Yeah, yeah. Plus the initial investment. But because the initial investment in the, so onsite, on-premises servers, depending on when they got replaced, generally they need to be replaced at least every seven years to nine years or so.
And that's pushing it, yeah.
And that's, that price, we don't know what the future cost of servers will be, but we can kind of estimate what they will be. Our current cost, we expect to be around 45,000 upfront just for the servers, depending on what encode requirement it is. And then in addition to that, the software for the on-premises. So your total, when we started to do those comparisons, you look at how much you're going to have to spend upfront the first time to do on-premises. And then at some point within that 10-year period, more likely have to replace some of those servers, you're going to have that cost again. And then we looked at, okay, here's what the cost is for maintaining this through the year. I think it was, again, it was like 180 to do on-premises and 200 to do off. And we feel like the benefits of off-premises are much better. So, and again, that's a 10-year cost. So the other nice thing about the off-premises is the upfront cost is, is again, minimal.
Right. It was almost double. And I think what I have here is just under 47,000 initial startup. And then year two is when you pay the annual reoccurring. That year one is included in there. But that's what I've narrowed it down to with, with actually getting those five ticket riders and everything is lumped into one package. In addition to this, real quickly, it does do personnel, equipment and everything else. It goes well above and beyond what our, what our system is capable of now. Well above.
Can you actually take notes in the records?
Yes, sir. And really, you know, I will say this, the decisions you're making tonight are going to last for a very long time. They truly are.
I have one more question. The radios that we're talking about, you believe we were determining that those radios are the same as the counties are, which gives you intercommunication.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And also reached out to Chief Cook as well. So we're all on the same sheet of music.
I think that's a big step.
Yes, sir.
And I think these are the ones you said that will, they'll basically go between
Yes, they'll search for the, for the strongest signal strength.
Versus, right.
And be able to
Yeah, the channel. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, they switch channels. Yeah. That's what we use in the military.
That's a no-brainer.
So we're talking about, again So we're talking about, again, it's a little bit over $100,000 between the radios and the off-premises decision, is what you're looking at.
I think we need to do it for our officers.
Safety. I mean, with the fire and everything like that, just showed how much we need our communication, and these radios will bring us to the forefront. We got to have them have the right equipment to do their job. If the server's, you know, on, beyond life support, and we have a case going on and the server goes kaput, that, that...
And it goes with it.
Yeah, exactly. So, no, safety, safety.
So you're asking then for...
Well, again, I think you and I, we need to do a little bit more due diligence on the off-premises. We need to look at the rest of the modules. That's a separate decision. I'm not saying that this is, goes, that this goes with the other, but that's something that I think we need to nail down. So what I'm looking for is provisionally, if the mayor gets comfortable, that the council will be authorizing the mayor and the city manager to enter into a contract for off-premises software services with ENCODE, with the caveat that we're able to satisfy your concerns and questions.
If it's, if it's outside of what we're talking about, if it's inside of what we're talking about, around $20,000 a year, then that would be it. If it goes, you know, significantly on one side or the other, then I think it comes back. And then for the, the radios and the on-prem service, server that we need, you have the...
Like I said, on-prem service is already, is already budgeted. I think that's going to be less than 15,000 to replace. The only thing I have to do there is make sure that when we replace it, that it is, that we have the capability to support the new cameras. And so we'll, we'll make sure that we, we already have what we need there, so it's, we just need to make sure that it meets that requirement.
So the motion that you're looking for is a motion to approve the investigation for the off-premise software and empower you, city manager and the mayor, to, to make that decision as long as it stays within this dollar amount, and then approve a amount not to exceed $67,000 for the radios?
Yep, and I don't know if we want to talk about other items as well, but my thought was, we just kind of make a grocery list of the various items that need to be addressed. They're, yeah.
67.6.
So not to exceed 68.
Not to exceed 68, yeah. Well, and I think that we can talk about the other ones. I think in the interest of time, maybe just take a look at these, some, some of the new, I think we've talked about, well, we haven't really talked about the airport fence. We've talked about the pool heating, we've talked about the Houston Square improvements. I think we need more details on all of these. The new thing, the airport board had asked us to look at extending the fence the rest of the way around, so I think that we need to look into that and...
That's a huge safety. They've had a couple of near hits with deer on the runway.
Well, to be clear, I don't think this actually extends it all the way around. It gets it...
The height?
Yeah, well, it gets the north end taken care of. There's still a portion on the north end of Bendelay that may not be done. I think that's right.
Yeah.
Because it's going this way, this way, this way. I think this part hasn't been done here, and what they would do is do this portion.
You're just creating a problem for yourself of capturing a bunch of wild animals if you don't figure out a solution to fence the whole thing in.
Yeah.
You're just making it worse, because once they get in there, they can't get out, can't find it.
So I think that we need to go into a little bit more detail about that. The portable restrooms, I thought that was a really novel idea. Do you want to go into that a little bit?
Yes, we haven't talked about this before, and this is just something that Devin brought to my attention, you know, he was looking at, I guess, probably a vendor reached out to him, and he said, "Yeah, this is interesting." He showed us the mayor and I, and when you look at what we're spending right now, when I say "we," I mean the, the various, like, for the Fourth of July, the various events we do, this has the potential to pay for itself, you know, think about it that way down the road, because it's something that, that we could just have as a service. And as we increase our tourism and increase events, one, depending on the nature of the event, there might be some groups that'd be willing to lease it or rent it from the city, and two, it would, it gives us that built-in ability to provide nice restrooms onsite. So what we're talking about is a trailer, and there's various trailer options that you can get. Again, this isn't, it's an idea. It's not a strong...
Yeah, we've got to be careful, though, because we have a local business that we're supposed to be supporting that provides those services too for these events.
So they, they provide...
Are we getting our restrooms from a local business?
The port-a-potties.
The port-a-potties, yes.
But I'm talking about the...
And they have handicap ones that they put out there too and everything.
Yeah, so the nice one on the trailer, they don't do.
I know, but...
We're replacing their services.
We're replacing them services and impacting...
Except that we're already getting that trailer from somewhere else. So this is, so yes and no.
That's why we got to be careful.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But there are times that we have to look at the needs of, of the people over...
I understand, but we've, we've got to watch, walk that fine line, because we got to be supportive of our local businesses.
Absolutely.
So...
May I suggest that we divide these up and deal with PD items immediately and then work on these others?
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce the rest of them.
Well, again, if we have a workshop there, and we can, my intention is to have a CIP workshop anyway.
All right.
And so maybe we just make it a...
I think we do it as a part of that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then you look at, I think that we would be remiss in not looking at the long-term vision.
Absolutely.
It's easy to look at the things that sound really cool right now until you look at some of the things that are committed in the future, so I think it would be good to do that. So I think that right now, then, the motion would be to approve an amount not to exceed $68,000 for the PD radios and for the city administrator and the mayor to do an investigation on the off-premises software around one, how would you say that, around $20,000 a year?
For 10 years.
The delta, yeah.
Give or take.
Well, just approve the ENCODE off-premises software. So, yes, this is where Phil would say, add, yeah, so...
Deborah, did you capture that, or do you need to have that restated?
Probably, because I already had something written down before y'all were talking about this thing.
Oh, perfect, okay.
I just had to authorize you and city administrator to research the off-premises software with Tower Technologies.
Right, so it's research and approve, then? Because then, if we don't authorize to approve, then we'd have to bring it back.
Pre-approving.
You're authorizing a contract with Tower Technologies.
Not to exceed...
Right. For the software that, because, okay, is the software separate from the off-premises cloud, from what y'all are going to research?
The cloud-based...
No, the cloud is the same thing.
That is it.
Either way, we're going with Tyler. And you don't need permission for the server, you've got enough of...
Yeah, that's, that's already in the budget, and it's, and it's within, yeah, my spending of $47,000.
Yeah, it's already a budgeted item.
And Deborah, approve the purchase of the radios not to exceed 68,000.
That was the easy one, yeah.
You hadn't said it, so I...
But y'all are approving the Tyler Technology software.
Slash cloud.
Slash cloud.
Either cloud or server, yeah.
Not to exceed $200,000 over 10 years?
Well...
Is that what we're saying?
Boy, I keep hearing that, you know, 10 years and to split it up.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, that'd be one way to say it.
Let's, let's do it probably not to exceed 25, and that gives us a little bit of room in there.
So 250,000.
Because, I mean, we're going to have to spend it one way or the other.
Oh, I know.
And we'll find the, the cheapest option with total cost of ownership with it. So I think it's probably an amount not to exceed 250,000 over 10 years.
You answer that either way, so...
All right, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
That was easy. Second?
Aye.
You guys are fast on the draw. Right-hand side's going fast.
The chief's second.
Yeah, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
I want to mention pool, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, it's not to exceed 25,000 per year.
For 10 years.
For 10 years.
Reoccurring maintenance.
Reoccurring maintenance.
Whatever reoccurring fees they have. I just want to speak to pool heating real quick. The reason I bring this up, it is timely as far as when the work will be done, if we want to open it for the season. I know, I've talked extensively to the mayor about this, I've talked extensively to Herb about this, I kind of know what their two opinions are, but I'm really kind of speaking to Paul and Sheena, if this is an item that, that you think you're going to approve, or you think you would support, then it's something that we, we, we need to do sooner than later. So if we do a workshop...
It pushes it down the road.
Yeah, well, no, 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 I'm saying if we do a workshop, we may want to look at doing a workshop at the very next meeting, so I'm super thrilled about, but just because, because of that item, not because of all the other items, because that item, we've got to, if we're going to do something, staff's got to really need to pull the trigger like yesterday, so we can get the heater's ordered, get them installed, we can get the pool, we've already got the pool cover. But again, I'm not saying, this is a council decision, I want council to tell us whether y'all want to do that or not.
I thought we had already approved this.
No, you had approved, somebody else paying for it?
Right.
Right.
And there are not picturing one.
Okay.
So what, what council approved, and I think all three of you were on that council that approved, the ability for somebody to eat the pool.
Okay.
If they picked up the cost of the heater, the cost of the gas, the cost of all of the other stuff.
Right.
So now we're looking at, at the city absorbing that. So I think that, I think that that could even be, that could potentially be a separate conversation in, so I think that if you guys are leaning toward that, and you feel like it would be prudent to do it for this season, then we can put that, at least that item, on the next agenda as like a dedicated, dedicated discussion without having to go through all of the full CIP.
We've got a lot of detail now. I mean, we basically know that if, we've got about 54,000 in capital expense to buy the materials, and we've got about 46,000 in O&amp;M cost to run the pool for the extra time.
Well, and our, our thought process is to, to, we've, we've, we've overestimated the gas cost by about, we used, so Schneider took the actual, like, the temperature outside and what it would cost, and gas, and they did calculations and actually came up with a scientific formula to tell us how much they thought it was going to cost us.
Schneider did that?
Schneider did.
Looked at it three times.
But we've, but the amount that they gave us, we actually increased by 50% just to be conservative. So the gas cost, I think, is close, especially when you consider that, our thought is that on the run of the pool, we would close potentially February 1st. So you avoid, typically in Texas, you're going to avoid the coldest, we generally experience really cold days, it's somewhere between February and April. And so we, we would actually be closed during those months. So this is not a year-round heated pool situation, it's through February. And that coincides with the MBISD, their swim season, they wrap up, I think, February 16th. So one of the things we're trying to understand from their coaches, when do you actually need to stop swimming in our pool? And we think it could be as early as the first week in February, in which case we would close after that. Or we would, yeah, we would not heat the pool after that. And that would greatly reduce the ongoing...
Do you want to put that on as a discussion then for the next meeting?
Yes.
I'm ready to say yes to it now, because we've already discussed this many times, and we've all been supportive of it.
I disagree on the cost. I think that we need to dig deeper into the cost, so let's do that, let's do that on the next meeting. And I, if you want to go through other CIP, depending on what we've got on the, depending on what we've got on the agenda, we can add that, but let's just at least get this one on.
On the next meeting?
On the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll get all the numbers together, put it out in front, and look at both upfront cost. I'm much less concerned about the upfront cost than the ongoing cost.
You and me both. I think you and I are on the same page. The ongoing operations is just an issue, but, you know, pools are typically, they're subsidized, so it's just whether it's something the community values or not, and whether you want to invest in it or not, so... Okay.
All right.
Yes, we're going to move the, the pool heating specifically.
Take care, chief.
Thank you, chief.
And then the other items, we'll do at a workshop.
The next item is consider and appropriate, take appropriate action on utility fund balance purchases. These, the two items are wastewater treatment plant gates and wastewater treatment plant security cameras.
So it's actually, the wastewater treatment plant has the gates it needs, it's really the public works yard, so I misstated this on the agenda, and I apologize for that. That was clarified to me after it got posted, that we do have a gate, the gates at the, ironically, I think there's gates at, I don't know how much I want to say, there's, there's security improvements that need to be made at wastewater treatment plant, and there's different security improvements that need to be made at public works, and both are somewhat desperate. And you have those estimates, I believe?
No.
No.
It's about, it's about $20,000 for each. It's about 20 grand for cameras and 20 grand for gates. A gate, an electric gate at the airport, just using that as an example, I think that cost us about 10 grand. They, they did an installation not that long ago, and so it'd be about $10,000 a gate at the public works yard. And then the cameras, to get adequate cameras and systems, we think that's somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000. And again, the utility fund's adding 660 to their fund balance, so they have, they have the money to make these improvements, and we, especially the public works yard, we've got to get better controls in place, because right now, the way it operates is...
Have we had issues with...
Not good. Not that I want to get into, but yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had issues at both places.
Right.
And it's, it's becoming more serious.
I know about the ones at the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, yeah.
So can we then, are we still able to make a motion, since it says wastewater treatment plant gates, to change that to public works gates?
I think so. It's a utility fund either way. It's a utility fund expense, so I would, I would say yes. If Cynthia were here, I'd kick her under the table, and she would say yes.
All right, so we don't have any further details, but these are kind of no brainers to me. Any...
Was there, there's a separate item for general fund CIP, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, yes. I was just making sure I'm covered, okay.
Okay, so I think the motion here is to approve the gates at the public works yard and the wastewater treatment plant security cameras. And do we have the dollar amount on those?
Yeah, just an amount not to exceed forty thousand.
Not, for the both, not to exceed forty thousand. Do I have a motion on that?
Still moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item is consider and take appropriate action on capital improvement plan expenditures and that is city hall roof and flooring and the police department roof.
So I was hoping to get some pictures to you. I don't know that, I, he may have sent them over and I missed it, but I did not see the pictures that they took. They took some very eye-opening pictures of our roof. The reason this is being brought to you is in our CIP, our adopted CIP, there was forty thousand dollars plugged in for city hall renovations. Honestly, when we were going through CIP, I just kind of fat fingered a number as a placeholder because I knew there, I mean, you can kind of look around and see the building needs attention. But I had no idea how much we'd be able to afford and we need to probably start somewhere. So the first, we have two estimates. They're not in the realm of actually needing to go out and get a bid. We go get several quotes, but the, the amount for the city hall roof to make the repairs to the roof and windows to basically, what I'd like to see us do to city hall is fix the envelope first. Stop the leaking, stop the, the.
The damage.
The damage. So to stop the damage, that's about fifteen thousand dollars. It's a little less than fifteen thousand dollars. That's the quote that I have in hand.
Fifteen or fifteen?
Fifteen, one five. To stop the damage at the police department is around ten thousand dollars to fix that roof. That is, it is only a patchwork repair and the contractor emphasized that this is a patchwork repair. It's not a full fix. If we want to do a full fix, he gave me a quote for that. And I, I would suggest we just do the patch at this, at this stage, even if that's a sunk cost because we've already, as a council and as an EDC, stated that we're working on putting that building up for basically at auction, but to allow proposals from developers to look at the redevelopment of the police station and the public works yard. So if we're going to do that, I don't think it's, makes sense to, to invest in that roof. Because we don't know what that proposal will look like and we can disclose at the time that, hey, the roof needs to be replaced and here's a quote for replacing it if they end up wanting to, to maintain the building in some shape or form.
What's the warranty on the, the patch?
Three, so three years, all, all the work is a minimum of three-year warranty.
I think we did that three years ago.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think the roofer that we've used in the past is deceased.
Well, that's for you.
City hall, yeah, that went to the city hall. I don't know about PD.
We did city hall, we didn't do PD.
Uh, city hall was five years.
Five years ago.
Six years.
Six years ago, okay.
It was long.
Time flies.
Yeah, it was at least.
I'm moving, so the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the city hall roof and police department roof repairs. Second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
One of the things that they provided us at no cost that we'll probably be looking at in the future. So I see that as phase one and thank you very much, council, for doing that. The next phase, we have some carpet replacement that needs to happen because we had a sewer overflow. When we look at that, I'd like to look at flooring. I'd like your input on what you would like to see done with the flooring throughout the city hall. I think it'd be neat to try and restore the original wood floors. I don't know what that would cost to do, but they're under there, I believe. I know they are in some places. So it'd be interesting to see what that would cost to do. Or at, at a very minimum, replace the carpet in the places where it's really worn. It's been a number of years since it was replaced. So I'm going to get estimates on that. Then there's other things, the cosmetic, once you repair and fix the envelope of the building, in my mind, the next step is to take care of these issues where you have visible signs of prior damage and, and put them back so that they don't, you know, these aren't there anymore. And we have those throughout the building. What the contractor that I had give me this, this quote did for us, again, at no cost, they came in and had a 3D.
Scan.
Scan of the whole building. So you can do a walkthrough. In a couple of weeks, I'll be able to walk you through on a website and you can walk through the building and you can zoom in and it gives you all your dimensions at the same time. So, so as we bid this work out, we'll be able to tell them exactly to the inch what the square footage per room is, what the height, what the size of the, you know, if you have to replace the baseboards, how tall they are, how wide they are, all of that stuff. It's just kind of neat. And again, it didn't cost us anything to do that.
Yeah, that's what all architectures are using now.
Yeah, it's really cool. But yeah, so I, I envision this in a couple of stages. So one would be to, to do the cosmetic repairs to the building. I'll get estimates for that after we fix the envelope. And then the next stage, or maybe in conjunction with that, might be some flooring improvements. And then beyond that is other major improvements that I think are needed at city hall. One of them is electrical. We've talked about if we can fix the leakiness of the building, we might be able to go with, I know one of the things the mayor's been talking about is changing to split units for air conditioning for certain rooms to reduce our energy costs. I haven't really seriously looked at that. I haven't looked at the lighting or anything else because honestly, the building is so leaky right now that energy efficiency is kind of a joke. Trying to do energy efficiency on this building, I think would be a lost cause in its current state. If we're able to improve that, those are things that we'd like to look at in the future. And then I would really, really like to look at doing something with our break room, the way our kitchen is, that kind of thing. But that's it down the road.
Yeah, and if we could throw in the outside aesthetics as well, because like our handicap accessibility needs to be brought up, modernized. I had some people point out to me the handrails coming into the back of the building here, all rusted over and everything. That could cause a problem. So just.
Yeah.
And then I had other people recommend that it needs a good pressure washing.
Yeah, we've got cracks and stuff that are appearing in our stairs outside as well, facade and some other places.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you all.
All right, next item is staff reports.
I'm going to be really candid. I have not looked at it. So I can't even comment on what's in there and I don't know what Chuck Norris did, if he did something.
I can't do the same thing.
Did he do the same thing?
He doesn't have to word that spelling.
For, for our boy scouts, our airport, I challenged our airport director when I first got here to flavor up the, the reports and I, and I made the offhand comment that one time I included, just to test my council to see if they're reading, I included a joke about Chuck Norris and just kind of embedded it in my report to see who noticed it. And to their credit, most of them did. Well, he now has that in every one of them. You gotta go, but you gotta go find it.
So Chuck Norris does not use spell check. If he happens to misspell a word, Oxford will change the spelling.
Thank you. So yeah, credit to David for doing that. He does provide an update on airport, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to, if you want to just email this to me,